Good evening, welcome to the town of Emmitsburg Town Meeting for September 12th, 2022. At this time, I'll ask that if you have a cellphone, please turn it to either mute or off in respect to the decorum of our meeting. We'll take a moment for that if needed. And now I ask if we please stand to make the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you all for being here. It's appreciated that you make the time to attend our town meeting and participate in our process. Future meetings, the write-in election deadline will occur on Tuesday, September 20th at 12:00 PM here at the town office. The Planning Commission, thank you. The Planning Commission will meet on Monday, September 26th at 7:00 PM. The meeting will occur here in the town office. One can also attend via Zoom. The Board of Appeals will meet here on Tuesday, the 27th of September at 7:00 PM in the town office and via Zoom as well. The town of Emmitsburg election, the upcoming election will occur on Tuesday, September 27th. The polls will be open from 7:00 AM till 8:00 PM, at which time they will close. The town council will have our next meeting on October 3rd at 7:30 PM here in the town office and it will be available via Zoom as well. So now we turn to the board.
Mr. O'Donnell, may I add one more meeting, please?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Monday, October 24th at 7:30 PM, there will be a town council workshop regarding the Freely Farm Development.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else with an announcement regarding a meeting? Hearing none, we move forward. Okay. My hope is that everyone's had the opportunity to review the meeting minutes from the October 1st, 2022 town meeting. Are there any modifications or changes that we're hoping to see?
I had none.
Okay, very good.
I'll make a motion to accept the town meeting minutes from the August 1st meeting as presented.
Terrific. Is there a second for Mr. Ritz's motion?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Motion has been made by Commissioner Ritz. It has been seconded by Commissioner Davis. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone against? Motion carries five to zero with all commissioners present. Now turn to the deputies for the police report.
Good evening. How are you guys?
Good, how are you?
Good. So, the month of August, I was off. They had four holidays, one sick, nineteen others was me. It's out on medical weeds. Barthol's car broke down, so there were some fleet issues. Cars are really hard to come by now because of COVID. Sheriff's officers ordered a bunch, but they're just slowly trickling in. They handled 335 calls for services to town, three arrests, eighty-four direct patrols, forty-four traffic stops, and sixteen wind cards completed. There was more thefts from the job site at Rutter's. Just notes is that school's back in session, and I could take any questions that you guys ask.
Any questions for the deputy at this time?
No, I'd just like to welcome you back and see your
Thank you.
Good health.
Yes, sir.
And we missed you while you were gone.
No problem, sir. Glad to be back.
Anybody else? Great. Thank you, deputy. And we now move forward to the town manager's report.
Good evening. This is the town manager's report for July of 2022. I'll highlight some key areas related to streets outside of the normal duties. Staff put mulch in tree wells and flower beds on East and West Main Street. They weed ate and weed killed around the guardrails at the end of Walty Avenue, DePaul Street and Creamery Road. They continue to work with the contractor on the streetlights that are not functioning properly on the south side of East Main Street, from Federal Avenue to Creamery Road. They trimmed some shrubs, trees, and curbs on South Jameson Avenue. They also trimmed some tree limbs along the community park walking trail behind Ball Field Number Three. They worked with a contractor for some curb stop replacement projects on West Main Street. Related to parks, they replaced a section of board fence by the ADA Playground in Eugene Myers Park. They pulled weeds, weed killed, and put mulch around park entrance signs. Staff took down two trees in Emmett Gardens Park. They also put down dirt seeded mulch along the edge of the new Blacktop Road in, I think that was a Memorial Park, not Eugene Myers Park. And the contractor striped the memorial parking lot in July. Related to water, at the time of this report, Rainbow Lake was at the spillway level of 16.6 feet. As of today, it is 15.7, so we're about one foot below the spillway. The roughing filters are being backwashed three times a day, and the DE filters have gone down from two runs, two-week runs to just a one-week run. The well depths, there has not been much change in the well depth since July. Water production and consumption, we produced an average of 221,570 gallons per day, and we consumed an average of 234,949. The amount of backwash water in the month of July was approximately 14.6%. We purchased 441,700 gallons from Mount St. Mary's in July. For wastewater, we treated an average of 364,680 gallons per day and consumed 234,949, which means approximately 35.57% of the wastewater treated was wild water. We had no spills or untreated sewage. However, we did exceed the plant's design capacity twice in July, on July 6th and then July 12th. In July, we received about 5.9 inches of rain. We currently have a surplus of 3.08 inches over the last six months. Trash pickup will remain Mondays in the month of September. Below, you'll see some of the meetings that I attended in July, just a few noteworthy items. The flow has been turned up on well number three to keep up with the lake water. We installed a new recycle pump, which had stopped discharging for about a week and a half. Staff installed a new message signboard at Rainbow Lake, and staff worked at the community center building. We dug out all the shrubs, we killed mulch, trimmed the trees all the way around the building. And then staff pumped out and installed a new sump pump and receptacle in the South Seaton Avenue water meter vault. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for staff regarding the town manager's report, Mr. Ritz?
Two questions. One, in the report under Parks on page nine, the two trees in the Emmett Gardens Park, is that back where there was, I think we were anticipating to put a water treatment facility back there. Is it in that back corner? Is that where?
It was closer to the park. A while back, they had deemed some trees that were hazardous, and I think these two were closer to the park area than the treatment plant.
I remember, yeah. Potomac Edison was gonna take care of those.
Right.
So we went ahead and took care of those to alleviate them coming down and knocking power out.
Correct.
Okay, good. The next one's actually not in your report, but I know it happened recently. Do we have it on camera? The damage to that gate fence up at Rainbow Lake, were we able to figure out what happened there?
No, we were not.
That's a shame.
We're in the process of replacing the gate.
Okay.
And the post. Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for town staff regarding the town manager's report? Okay, thank you. Moving forward, we turn to Commissioner Combs, sorry, Town Planner's Report. Excuse me, Mr. Planner, thank you.
Sure. This is the Planner's Report for July. Also gonna highlight just some key aspects of my report. So Board of Appeals, I processed the variance application request for 4,000 care court. I also prepared the staff memo for that, and I prepared a new alternate members information packet. Under Commissioners, I worked with MDE in order to update the floodplain management ordinance per FEMA requirements of new floodplain maps. I created ordinance 23-01 as a result of the new requirements, which you'll see hopefully in January or February 2023. Prepared ordinance 22-08, which would update removal of grass and weeds section, which is before you tonight. I prepared the MS4 permit update presentation, and I wrote a letter to the mayor, from the mayor to MDOT requesting a feasibility study to extend sidewalks from the intersection of Silo Hill Road, East Main Street, to the proposed parking ride. Grants, Chesapeake Bay Trust, Silo Hill Stormwater Management Basin retrofit design and purboning grant management. Under Community Development Block Grant, I reviewed and processed Week 48 payroll. This was the final payroll report. Process reimbursement request number 11, that was also the final, and I completed and submitted the grant's final report. I met with MDOT representative on the 29th to discuss the grant opportunity to finalize sidewalk connections from Cedar Avenue to the edge of the town boundary. MS4 stormwater, for the Silo Hill Basin retrofit project, I oversaw tree brush removal contractor on the 26th. I met with our engineer on the 27th to discuss the change order requirement set forth for you tonight. Tree plantings, I spoke with George Breton on the 12th regarding future tree planting projects and partnering with the Daughters of Charity. I finalized the pollution prevention plan project, which our staff reviewed and two commissioners reviewed today. Continue working on the current year MS4 permit, which is due at the end of October. For code enforcement and permits, I processed eight zoning permit applications, seven backflow preventer permit applications. I issued one-stop work order, and I've responded to various incident reports. Planning Commission, various project management, in particular 500 East Main Street, right-of-way plat, I recorded that at the courthouse. Christ Community Church, I reviewed and created staff memos for the adequate public facilities ordinance. Addition plat, forest and delineation plan, preliminary forest conservation plan, final forest conservation plan, and also their site plan. Brookfield parcel C, D, and E, I reviewed and created staff memos for their adequate public facilities ordinance, their forest and delineation plan, preliminary forest conservation plan, and also their preliminary subdivision plan. I attended the Planning Commission meeting on the 25th. Miscellaneous, I met with the manager, mayor, attorney on the 5th regarding potential freely property annexation. I attended a FEMA floodplain meeting on the 6th. For Stan 10 forestry management, I processed paperwork, insurance bond payment and permit. Tipton started harvesting, and the two trail crossings were marked by MD, DCNR representative. And as always, there's our new business and development updates.
Thanks, sir. Any questions for the town planner regarding his report? No, hearing none. Mr. Golden, is it possible to get a summary from perhaps the grants administrator? Is that what you're interested?
Yeah. That's me. Okay. All right. Give me one second.
Yeah.
Get back to my paperwork. Okay. So I did kind of highlight a few areas on Ms. Shaw's report. For active grants, the number one is the USDA new public works equipment. We have received the backhoe and the multi-use tractor. It's been delivered. The SCADA computer system at the wastewater treatment plant's been completed. We are still waiting on the work truck to be delivered and the invoicing before we can submit for final grant report. The second one, the GOCCP grant, that was for the three license plate readers and three surveillance cameras. Installation is scheduled for September 15th. And USDA Creamery Road Pump Station, I just signed the permit that's gonna be sent to MDE. So we're still waiting on the permitting from MDE, the Frederick County Building Permit, and once we receive both of those, it'll go, design will be complete, and it will go to USDA for review. For the, number two on the page 13, the CPMP Silo Hill Playground Improvement for 146,263 with no match. It's to replace the old swing set and playground tower with new playground equipment and install a half basketball court. Installation to occur in January or February of 2023 at the latest. We're hoping to get the half basketball court in prior to that installation. Newly awarded grants, we have five of them. We are, three of them, the state is holding fiscal year '23, actually four of them, fiscal year '23 POS applications to approve them all at once. So we're waiting on final approval for the Rainbow Lake parking lot, the community park cornhole boards, the outdoor storybook trail, and then Maryland Energy Administration, we applied for a grant to assist with the replacement of all the streetlights on East and West Main Street. Pending grants, we will receive either a grant or loan or a combination from MDE for North Seaton Avenue and DePaul Street Waterline. I think we don't receive final word on what our percentages are loan grant until January. January. The Main Street Improvement Grant for $10,000 to help with the streetlight replacement. Local Parks and Playground Infrastructure Grant for fiscal year '23, we submitted for four projects totaling $100,000. I believe the mayor and possibly Commissioner O'Donnell will be attending that meeting at the end of September. We applied for the remaining amount to cover the Rainbow Lake parking lot. The Community Park Pavilion Improvements to rehab the pavilion or replace tables, Memorial Park Pavilion Improvements to rehab pavilions or replace tables, and then additional baseball helmet racks for the remaining dugouts. We also applied to the Department of Housing and Community Development, Community Legacy for Streetlight Improvements for $161,476. I believe I sent everybody on the board an email to please reach out with comments in support of this. And then USDA Community Facility Grant, we just submitted for that for an additional $75,000 for the streetlights. And then DNR's Community Park and Playgrounds, we did two projects, the half basketball court in Memorial Park, and then an additional playground equipment to, in addition to what's already there. Upcoming grants, we're gonna apply for an additional three more license plate readers, the Maryland Tourism Office, and then other grant funds as they're found.
Thank you. Any questions for staff regarding the grant updates?
Not at this time.
Well, okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Moving forward, now we turn to Commissioner Combs, Mr. Ritz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I attended the, as the mayor likes to call it, the Emmitsburg-Thermont Community Show on Friday to represent the town at the flag ceremony. I attended MS4 training today at the town office. I found that was very interesting. I got to see how the MS4 program really relates to staff and what they do. That was my takeaway from it today. So it was a different perspective. Speaking of staff, I did accompany Mr. Jared Brantner. He's our current lead operator for the Water Department to take a tour of the water treatment plant and to see where our current active and inactive wells are located. I'm ashamed to admit, after all these years, I finally did it. It's very interesting, actually, and he is very enthusiastic to show any of you, if you're interested. Just let Ms. Willetts know. Commissioner Burns, it's been a pleasure working with you these past years, and I highly respect your decision to place family first. Hopefully, we'll have a chance to serve together in the future. And I also wanted to thank Commissioner Davis for deciding to run again, and to thank Ms. Bowman-Pallett, Mr. Hagan, and Mr. Long for stepping up and your willingness to serve our community. As a reminder, we heard it once tonight. We'll probably hear it several times. The town election is on the 27th of this month. The polls are open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM at the Old Town Office at 22 East Main Street, and that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Davis?
Oh, yeah. I'd just like to send out our condolences to the family of Tom Hope. Tom was a lifelong resident of Emmitsburg, World War II veteran. He passed away last Saturday at the age of 98. And to me, and like I told his family, Tom died with dignity. Tom just wore out. He did not die of COVID. He did not die of a bad heart. He didn't die of cancer. Tom died of old age, and what a great way to go. We lost so much history with him because we were asking questions about, did you know who, or does somebody in this picture go ask Tom? And he knew. And so to his family, we say thank you for sharing him with us for all those years, and he's gonna be missed. The Parks and Rec Board met last month, and we had been having trouble getting together since COVID. So we changed the date to Saturday so we could actually meet in the park and take a look at what's going on there. And we actually had six board members show up and participate. So in the future, we might be looking to change the date of the Park and Rec Boards' meeting to help the members participate. And that's all I got. Thanks.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Sweeney?
I just wanted to let everyone know that Little League has started back up. They'll be using both parks and all the fields. We have a big tournament coming up on October 1st and 2nd. There will be hundreds of children playing on those two days in both parks. So be careful and watch going through the alleys and stuff, because there'll be a lot of children running around town that day. Halloween is coming up. Lions comes getting ready for Halloween, along with the fire companies with their help, and then the user building. We appreciate it. That'll be on the 31st. Halloween will be on the 31st on Halloween itself, so. And don't forget to come out and vote on the 27th. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Burns, I'm gonna do something different tonight.
Oh, yeah?
I, as president, usually reserve this as the last word for me, but I'm gonna give it to you tonight. So I'll give you my comments very briefly, and we'll move to you, sir. I was able to attend with mixed emotions the departure of the Vincentsions and our new leadership coming to St. Joseph's. We want to welcome. I met also with a visitor, Ms. Joanne Barr, who is the Assistant City Manager of Laurel, Maryland, wanted to see our parks and our trails. And I gave her a tour of our facilities, and she was completely blown away by how well they are managed and maintained. They were here Labor Day weekend, and the parks, I think, were like postcard perfect. So thank you to staff for that. It was sort of a surprise visit to me, but it worked out very well, as the parks were glorious and the trails were well-used at the time. I met with library staff about the upcoming anniversary celebration this Saturday here in the library on the 17th. There's going to be a celebration of the anniversary of the building and the library. There also will be a display presentation or reveal. So that's gonna happen on Saturday morning. We have the, I'm sorry. Two requests for future agenda items I'll talk about at the end of the meeting. One is related to parking in town. The second one relates to trails, and there could be a third one related to an ordinance review or maybe even revision, and I'll address that at the end of the meeting. But those relate to phone calls I'd received from individuals saying we need to look for, we need to address some issues in town at the moment. And the final thing is, for those who are running for office, all of you, thank you very much. It's nice to see such a full group who have all been involved in committees and have kind of aspired to leadership positions beyond the leadership positions they hold at the moment, and that is very impressive. On the final note, Mr. Burns, I will leave you with the final word, but you've done a great job, and I just want to make that absolutely clear and no uncertain terms. And I look forward to, again, touching on your sage counsel when the opportunity presents itself, and it will present itself, between bedtime stories and bathing and all that. So, all right, sir, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you to everybody for the kind words. I think I should address the subject. Obviously, I'm not running for commissioner this next session. We were blessed with our fourth child last Monday, or I'm sorry, two Mondays ago. That's how much sleep I've gotten. The 29th, our little girl born at 1:00 AM, and so I made the difficult decision to put my family first. I have three older children who are very active, dance, soccer, Boy Scouts, everything under the sun, and felt like at this point in my life, I needed to put the family first, and I wouldn't be able to put as much towards the town as I possibly could. So I made that decision. I also feel like I've always been a very approachable person, and so I'd like to thank all the commissioners who fielded comments for me on why I wasn't running. You know, I've answered every phone call, email that I've ever been addressed, and so I appreciate everybody that was able to answer those questions, especially, you know, while the baby was being born. So I appreciate everybody's help with that. So the next one was, I know there's been a lot of complaints recently about the traffic in town during Six of Hearts. I've been blessed with the opportunity over the last 20 years to work at the Odd House and meet firefighters from across the nation. You have volunteer firefighters, career firefighters, guys that come in, women that come in from Hawaii, Alaska, California, Utah, you know, that do this for a living. And every time they stop in the Odd House, they walk next door and they see our firehouse. And every one of them come back in, and they're like, my God, that place is amazing. Like, they have equipment we don't have, and we're full-time. And the reason we're able to do that for our fire hall is because the efforts of people like Frank Davis and everyone else that works there and does all the fundraising and brings in the money and works tirelessly for bingo and everything else, provide our town the best possible equipment, not only for our town, but Thermont, Waynesboro, Gettysburg, Tontown, I think you guys got as far south as Frederick on occasions with your tower truck. They're the first ones there for other towns as well, and it's their effort through that fundraising. So yes, we might encounter a little bit of traffic in town, and yeah, it's a minor inconvenience, but at the same time, we have another option. We could go full-time fire service. Our taxes are gonna go up, and we're gonna run into many more problems that we might not with our volunteers who work tirelessly. So yes, I understand there might be some traffic, but given the fact that the amount of money that was raised for the fire hall, especially this last Six of Hearts, which was over 550,000, you had two people from Waynesboro win that money. So how much how much extra business is being brought into town, whether it be Jubilee, Dunkin', McDonald's, any of the restaurants, because all these people are stopping into town? So they are doing an incredible service, not only for the citizens of our town in raising that money to support the fire hall, but at the same time, supporting all the local businesses from everybody coming in. I met a guy in Baltimore. He had an Emmitsburg Firehouse shirt on. I was like, where'd you get that? And he goes, I bought it when I got my Six of Hearts. So people are driving from outside of our community to come in and spend their money, not only to support our fire company, but all the businesses around. Lastly, I think one of the things that I've learned over the last three years is just how difficult this job is. And not only for the five of us up here, as well as the mayor, but for the staff as well. And I think one of the things that we fail to recognize sometimes is we focus a lot of our anger towards staff, and it's very difficult, because essentially what they're doing is they're following the codes that we have set forth in front of them. You elected all of us and our predecessors to put forth the best codes possible to do what's best for the town. And the book is this high, and if you want to, I'll let anybody borrow mine before I leave. It's right there. There's a few hundred pages that you can read through on a, what would take probably many, many nights. And they're doing their best job. Are they perfect? No, nobody's perfect. Have they made mistakes? Yes, and they've admitted to their mistakes. And we, as commissioners, should feel a lot of that anger first, because the things that need to be changed only get changed through what we vote on and what we decide. So being angry at staff, yes, there's times where that may be warranted, and they do their best that they can to defend and enforce the code as well as possible. But at the end of the day, it comes from us. It comes from us voting and saying, hey, this is what needs to be changed. This is what we believe is right. And we're hopefully reflecting what the voice of the town is and why we were elected in order to do so. So thank you for everybody that supported me through the last three years, and for the commissioners and all their support, and the town staff and the mayor as well. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll go to the mayor in a moment, but just to advise everybody, after we hear from the mayor, then we move to public comments. So everyone's waiting also for that, so just give you a sense of the timeline. Mr. Mayor, return to you, sir.
Jimmy, let me turn this thing on. It has been a pleasure to work with Commissioner Burns. He's a wonderful representative of the community and athlete, fitness, and a wonderful family man. It's been an honor to work with you. I really respect your judgment and your calls up here. A lot of difficult things. You're right. We're responsible for everything up here. It's us. We wrote this. They enforce it. I think predecessors here too. So if you get mad at them for enforcing it, deflect it up here to us, and we're there. Yeah. Just a couple of things to highlight. We had National Night Out, which was really special. Had all our representatives there, and it was a really terrific evening again, and pony rides, pet zoo vendors, and free food, everything. I went to lunch with the president of Woodsboro Bank. He brought up Dynamic Automotive, which has taken over his place there. That's good to see people, businesses reinvesting here. Buy, it's a good market. Tour the Fallen Firefighters Memorial with Congressman Trone. Met with Deputy Secretary Tony Hoover over there, and that's the first time he's been there. And that is a $55 million facility annual budget, and there are a lot of Rust Belt states would like to nibble at that. Take it, and they already have a little bit. We want to keep it up here. It has about 500 jobs if, pre-COVID contractors and state GSA. Ribbon cutting for Satanophemios, we had that. Lots of Lots of people may not know this, but ten years before Brown versus Topeka and all schools for to be integrated. Our sisters up here offering the only education that was available up here in the north, integrate their classes. They offered, they had to honor separate but equal for many years and they find, so that's it. You know, we're going to integrate ten years before nineteen forty four. Let's see. Frederick Health, Frank Ronde, Commissioner Davis and Fisher Ritz were at that. They didn't mention that, that that opened. What a great facility that is for us here. We want all our elderly, they're trying to get down to Frederick for everything's urgent care. There's testing. There's a doctor there and exams. And I think Commissioner Davis has already been out to tour the facility. And he says that they've already had a couple of people, taken a couple of people there, haven't you, Commissioner? So it's, it's a really, and we have a a planner who's going to come up here and work with us a little bit on on some things. And that was one of the highlights getting that up here because well, the biggest question we have, how do we get our elderly back and forth to Frederick for their appointments? Kim Johnson, Executive Director of Belt and the Mounts of Berries and Tony Hoover met with them for lunch. Bolinger Construction thirtieth anniversary. That was really special. They're, they're a very, very big company. I didn't, I never realized there what their sales were and then I relate that to you, but I don't know if that was told me in confidence, but it's, it's incredible what they're doing. They're and they're here and they're trying to expand if they can get by the land. Myers Park, we had the Mount Freshman over for the first year and they're going to do it again next year. Great event down there and they brought all the freshmen in and it was just terrific event and the president trainer was there and all our commissioners were there. It was really good evening. Sister Cityhood with our town. Oh, was that me? Is that you? Okay, we had another Zoom conference with that and I think we have some guests here. They're going to, who helped me out on on putting together this sisterhood thing. And I think you even have some further guests here that and wait, when that comes, that proclamation, we'll introduce you all. The we met, again, we had the mayor and then we also had their president of their university there. Mass with Vincentians, last time they're there, but that's the way it goes. Hundred and seventy years of serving here. Saint Joe's here, Father Michael Roach, the university historian. He's retired now. He helped me out with the wayside exhibit and writing a paper on the thesis paper on Satan Fimos. Kristi Jakubjak met with him, dedication that dawned in a room and not a academic center that was there. And let's see, if you mean a few other things, just quickly. Oh, boy, six thirty AM. I was down at the community, you're right, correct, Emmitsburg Thurmont Communities Show and with Commissioner Davis at the Obi Night and Commissioner Ritz, we were there. Thank you, Commissioner Ritz for carrying the flag in. That was really exceptional and very and then I was yesterday, Sunday, I was at the observance at the Fire Academy with the nine eleven, eight forty six, rang the bell, the toll of fives that Frank, you would know there and I, how many times they do that, but it was and a very special brief ceremony out there with the staff and faculty and the students who are there. Don't forget October eighth and ninth is Fallen Firefighters Memorial Weekend coming up. So we'll have a lot of guests here. That will be interesting. We, I'll be swearing in the next two days, the election judges. And again, congratulations to those who decide to run and it's, it is. It's an honor and a blessing. It's like I was talking to Pastor John about Deuteronomy and it comes with a curse. It comes with a blessing, but it comes with a curse. Okay. And let's see, ribbon cutting, wayside exhibit on open for the hundred anniversary of the high school be out here at ten o'clock. Now I'll give some remarks there and I too had a family reunion out in Utah of all plays, went out to watch our daughter, granddaughter was playing three soccer matches for the University of Alabama. They bring them young and that there and we got thirty five, thirty six people from seven different states out there and fat, you're right, sir, family first. Thank you very much. Happy to have you here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, at this time we turn to public comments and I'll set up the format so we all know. I go in order of individuals, how they have signed up. And if an individual has signed up and they want to speak to an agenda item, then just let me know. They want to speak to the agenda item. The other piece is in the past, we've asked you to identify yourself by providing your name and your home address. We no longer do that. If you could provide your name and if you choose to, you could offer that you're a town resident. And if you're a town resident, you could also offer perhaps the development or the neighborhood in which you live. So at this time I turn to our list and I have Mr. Ray Buckheister signed up to speak. And oh, sorry, we have our four minute limit, Mr. Buckheister coming up. This is our beloved traffic light. So this will tell you your four minutes and we turn to staff first. Staff, are we ready to go?
Hit the middle button. It'll turn your microphone on. There you go.
Can you hear me? Your mic is hot and are we ready, staff? Very good. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioners, Mayor, Town Staff. Appreciate everything you do for our community. I come the this evening to offer an agenda item for you to consider an agenda item. I sent an email out. Wasn't sure what the procedure was, but I copied all the commissioners, the mayor and the town staff because it was varied in in the dynamics of it. And it's, it's parking on Welty Avenue. And some of the other members of our community would like to speak about that rather than just come up in public comments. My email was pretty detailed, but I wasn't sure the process. So I'm coming before you to ask, you know, how to do that and could we make it an agenda item? Paul Huffer's here. I don't know if anybody else is here, but some of, some of the people that I've been working with in our down on Welty Avenue would like to see that. Second thing I want to talk about is I don't know the process or the procedure and I'd like to get some feedback. And it's with regard to planning and I don't know if I go through planning commissioner, whatever. Some of the problems that we're seeing with parking on Welty or it's kind of a brush with it is happening in other places of the town. And it's due to when the college kids come in, you know, they start filling up, you know, the houses that have rentals and things like that. And now I know personally from my own personal experience from doing it and other, other people, they'll, they'll buy properties. It's a college town. We all acknowledge that. And what, when renovations happen, you come for an application and that application is presented to Zach. I've had no problems with Zach. He does a great job. And he'll ask, you know, you're doing exterior renovations, interior renovations. If you're not doing any exterior renovations, that usually goes to Frederick County. But there's this potential that there's rooms, bathrooms, things like that being added. And then because of that process, maybe we're missing something like, do we have enough parking? Do we, you know, should the town be collecting some fees or something? But I'm mainly interested in the aspect that parking may not, may not be being looked at because it's an interior renovation. Nothing's happening on the exterior. But if you go from three rooms into a house for five rooms and you can get caught five college kids in there, you can potentially have five cars. I'd like to know the process and procedure for maybe getting involved in that. And then my last thing is, is I'd like to become somehow more active. I don't think a commissioner position is for me, but there's ways each of us have our things that we're concerned about with the town. And mine happens to be mom and pop, small businesses within the village zone. And there's not enough parking for those types of businesses survive. I definitely, you know, and with everything the town has done with, you know, understanding that we need a zone for commercial where cars can park, you can get your groceries and you can get your other things. But there are things that keep a small historic in-town community thriving like little coffee shops, ice cream shops, art stores, but without the parking, you can't sustain them. And the reason I know that is because I rented Dot Davis's place for one year and the reason we're not there is because of park. So I'd like to somehow know what the process and procedure is or find out how he can start looking at creative ways to bring some additional parking to the village zone. Those are my comments. Thank you for your time.
Under the wire too. Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Buckheister, thank you so much for coming in. Appreciate you talking to me on the phone as well and the other, other commissioners about this. I now turn to with staff readiness, Mr. Kevin Hagan.
At first I want to thank the staff and commissioners for allowing me to speak remotely since I couldn't be there today. I wanted to just speak a pat accidentally on one of your agenda items about the removal of grass and weeds for consideration. The town code initially now says one letter sent out, then removal can occur. Well, I appreciate all of us can say, yeah, we don't want any unkept lawns or things unsightly and all the problems in there. My concern is with the approval units you're looking at tonight, it's one letter. Then we can issue a fine and a lien on someone's house. I'd really like it to see you to go to probably a three letter thing where we issue the the initial letter. A second letter goes out fifteen to twenty five days later saying, fix it. A final certified letter goes out. If you don't fix it, we're going to fix it for you and charge them for it. I think though putting a lien on somebody's house is a bit over the top and yes, are there going to be people that don't pay it? Most definitely. If that becomes an issue for the town, we probably should think about outsourcing this to a collection agency as opposed to putting a lien on someone's house. And that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Mr. President, may I jump in real quick if Mr. Hagan's still online there? I I have some questions too. I don't know if you're going to hang around for the remainder of the meeting, Mr. Hagan. But I I had some questions and concerns regarding timeframe as well. So I'll be bringing that up later when we hit that agenda topic. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay. All right. Very good. Thank you. All right, we now turn to Mr. Scott Frager.
Good evening, Scott Frager. I live in Brookfield. Been a part of Emmitsburg for three years now and my family and I feel blessed to be out of Montgomery County and and here. And with that said, I'm coming here tonight as a concerned homeowner. I am involved in the Brookfield HOA. But I was able to observe on our Facebook pages that there is a a growing problem in the Brookfield and arguably the Pembroke communities that represents about two hundred and twenty houses in total. I would characterize the problem in three declarative statements and I'm not here to go into the details or offer solutions. What I'm here to do is to try to calm the community to better understand what we can and should be doing in the absence of of any clear direction that that I I just, I don't think exists right now. And so, for example, the issue is safety, the issue is traffic in the Brookfield and Pembroke community. The roads that are affected are Timber Mill, Brookfield and Irustown Road. Those have become commuter roads since the Brookfield community has been completed. The first issue is there's a speed problem. The driving conditions as well as the line of sight on Irustown Road. Line of sight being that if you're coming from town and you're headed towards Brookfield or Pembroke, you have to crest the hill literally in front of the first new house on Irustown Road before you could see whether or not there was a child, a animal or anybody else in the road. The speed at which cars crest that hill is often a problem. There is no pattern to the problem. It's random. Does it happen more often on Friday and Saturday nights? I I'm not here to to make that judgment. I'm here to to ask for help so that we can go back to the community and tell them something I learned by talking to Deputy Ahold? Ahold is, he's in the community very often. I don't think that's known by too many people. In fact, there, my second issue is there's a perception that because of the lack of of a perceived lack of of patrolling by officers in the community that the deterrent that a squad car would have if if it were known to be there, you know, on Friday evenings or Friday late at night or Saturday, that alone would keep people away. This past weekend was probably a peak of the kind of problems that we see moving in the wrong direction. Cars are moving faster. They're ignoring stop signs more often and there is more traffic. The last thing, so the first issue was the the speed, the road and driving conditions, the line of sight on Irustown Road. The second issue is the perceived lack of of deterrence because of what appears to be not enough police presence. The third point was next is the speed and the general disregard for stop signs on all three roads. Timber Mill, Brookfield and Irustown. And that happens anytime, any day of the week, morning, evening or or whatever.
So, Mr. Frager, your time is up. We do have the deputy in the room. I'm not going to ask him for comment, but I would make a suggestion. Number one, he's heard your concerns and they are very valid ones as one of your neighbors in Pembroke Woods. And it definitely is in accord with what we're seeing, the commuter route piece. I would strongly suggest we will follow up with you and also I would ask you also to follow up with the deputy and have direct conversations with him. And I think you'll be pleasantly surprised about his availability and his ability to meet the needs that you're seeking. Because as a community, we have very responsive deputies and I think if they have that information directly from you and when they hear it from us, not just commissioners, but just we who are in town, they're very responsive. I can't, I can't say you'll see perfection, but I think you'll see an improvement. So at that point, I'm going to have to ask you, if you give us one more sentence, then I'm going to have to end you with that, sir.
I would like to be able to go back home and let people know that you guys have heard the issue and I'll take your direction. I've already spent some time with the deputy. We'll, we'll set up something for him to come talk to the community. But I'd like to go back and be able to tell people that the Board of Commissioners knows there's a problem. And you guys will look into it and and get back to us. Is is that reasonable?
So as a board, we have.
Absolutely.
As you were speaking, he was writing. So he, he was taking down everything you were saying. So you'll see results.
And I think there are other people here with similar.
For Mr. Frager.
Yeah.
Mr. Frager, if you could stay at the podium for just a moment, Commissioner Burns has a question for you, if you're okay with that. Thank you.
Let's put a face with the the voice that we've talked on the phone so many times. So, how you doing?
Sorry to see you go, TJ.
Thank you. Question for you, though. Do you feel that it's people in the community that are that are doing this or is it people that are using as a connector to Pennsylvania and and the outlying areas?
I would say that that I don't know, but I do believe that there are people in the community and enough of them that if we ask, we'll get some decent information. that if we ask, we'll get some decent information.
All right. The only reason I ask is obviously, you know, this is a hot topic conversation and the connector road that has been proposed for years and years and years that obviously there we're trying to find the perfect location for this connector road, and a lot of that connector road would be utilized by people coming from Maryland into Pennsylvania. And my last thought is before I leave the commission is one of the things that kills me about the connector road is we as a town and a county are going to pay for a road for people from Pennsylvania to use to get home quicker. But they will never have to pay anything for it. So that's why I asked that question, is it people that are just trying to cut through and and get up into Fairfield and Waynesboro and things of that nature, or is it people that, you know, are generally from the community and stuff? So that 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 was my question for it because obviously the connector road has been a hot topic. And, you know, would that alleviate some of the issues for your community? Probably. But is it in the best interest of the town of Emmitsburg to have that connector road just so people from Pennsylvania can fly through town? Thanks.
Great. Thank you, sir. Okay, we turn now to the next public comment from Mr. Amy, Mrs. Amy Bowman-Pallett. Sorry about that.
Good evening, Commissioners and Emmitsburg. My name is Amy Bowman-Pallett, and I'm a resident of Southgate. And I'm running for Town Commissioner on September twenty seventh. And I'm here to answer some questions I've heard a lot include who are you? Why are you running for Commissioner? And what do you hope to achieve? So to give you some background on me, I come from a Catholic military family. And we moved frequently until my father retired after he served as Commander of Fort Ritchie in nineteen nine through nineteen ninety three. During that time, I had the privilege to live all over the world, including West Germany. And as a military child, I always struggled when people asked me, where are you from? Especially in a small town, where are you from? And I was like, I don't know. Do I tell you where I was born? Do I tell you where I remember last, or I list off all the different places I've been? So at the time, I had no idea. So when my father retired, we had the choice of moving anywhere, but we chose to stay in Maryland. And after graduating from Frederick High School, I I attended Mount St. Mary's where I received a bachelor's and my master's degrees. My husband, son, and I chose to settle in Emmitsburg in two thousand and fifteen, which is where we call home, and that's how we got here, and we love it. I am a former elementary school teacher with Frederick County Public Schools, and I'm currently a teacher specialist to support instructional and assistive technologies where we work to provide nonverbal students with a means to communicate. In addition, I have worked as an adjunct professor for Mount St. Mary's Education Department where I could give back to my alma mater that I love so much. And this past January, I started working on the planning commission with which has given me insight into the challenges of a small town. Next, why are you running? That's a good question. Why are you running? My family and I are planning on retiring here. We want to make Emmitsburg our long term home. We have a vested interest in how this town grows over time. Our residents and businesses should have a voice in future developments so we can maintain the charm of a small town. And what do you hope to achieve? While on behalf of Emmitsburg families and local businesses, I will advocate and fight for smart growth that matches our infrastructure, especially with water, traffic, and parking that is aligned to our small town. Also advocate for our local business friendly policies. Our businesses are located in all parts of Emmitsburg, and with that comes unique needs and challenges. Emmitsburg relies on these businesses, and they should be active partners to continue to improve Emmitsburg. Safety, I will advocate for our first responders who are the backbone of safety in this town, and they're just down the street, literally. Maintaining increasing support from them is always important. And as an educator, I would be able to advocate to the Board of Education for school upgrades. Open schools were popular in the seventies, and slowly school improvements have spread through the county to enclose our open spaces with walls and locked doors to make our children or to give our children a safer environment. While this is something I know the town doesn't have direct control over, I do believe as a community that we can make a difference. Parks and wildlife, you know, our parks are beautiful. We've heard it tonight. Maintaining park areas should always be considered with new projects coming down the pike. And also, as an educator, I've learned that asking questions and listening are keys to success, which is what I plan on doing as Town Commissioner. I would be honored to have your vote on September twenty seventh, and I encourage you to visit Amy BP for the number four Emmitsburg for more information, and you can contact me with any questions or concerns that you have there, too. I'd be more than happy to hear from anybody who would like to learn more. Thank you very much, Commissioners. Thank you, Town Staff.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming in and thank you for running. Okay, we now turn. Sorry. You had fifteen seconds. We now turn to Mr. Austin Steele. Mr. Steele, please.
My name's Austin Steele, resident of Emmitsburg, North Gate. But before we start, I just note that there were some documents that was hopefully we were going to present today, but we weren't able to. So I'm gonna relegate what I was gonna talk about at the end, so I just want like two points about those at the end. If you don't mind. And I'm gonna stick to some, in the interest of time, stick to my prepared notes. My name is Austin Steele, representing both myself as an Emmitsburg resident and Executive Director and founder of the nonprofit Trail Conservancy, two thousand and eight, through which I designed and built an natural surface trail system here in Emmitsburg. I worked very closely with Commissioner Tim O'Donnell developing our trails, and it needs to be stated that there would be no trail system in Emmitsburg had it not been for Tim's vision for the town. So we have a lot to thank Tim for this. Every town should have a trail system, and you can find reviews about the trails that we built here say we did a good job. Most all the trails were paid for with Recreation of Trails Program grants, which are federally funded through the State Highway Administration. The commonly referred to as RTP, the Recreation Trail Program funded trails need to be need to continue to remain open as shared use trails. My experience assisting landowners with trail development, I mean, there's a lot I could say, but I'll just in briefly designed over sixty miles worth of trail in the field, and we've built about forty of those. And we it's through our organization. And although I've trained many of my trail workers and in basic trail construction and finishing, never in all those years have I ever trained anyone in trail design because trail design requires specialized fields training and lots of time. So current concerns, I'm gonna start with the red trail. Now, as I do note that I did already submit some other questions to the town. So on the red trail, the red trails have been destroyed and impassable in many places as of June. Not everywhere, but in key passages been destroyed. Again, RTP funds were required, requires that them to be continue to be usable and maintained and thus open. And even if deciding to include an easier beginner trail within that same area, the advanced trail funded by the RTP grants should still remain open. And certainly, there is room in that area for both if it were designed properly. Next, we go to the connector trail. I'm gonna start with the negatives, and there are some positives. And the current temporary trail does not meet specifications for an intermediate trail, which is noted with a little sticky note when I say noted on there's a sticky note on the kiosk map about by the lake that says it's an intermediate trail. And it does not meet the specification, and this is not a random determination because when DNR posts their bid documents for sometimes that we submit bids for certain projects, they do include trail specifications that determine what kind of trails are, whether it's beginner trail, intermediate trail, or advanced trail. Trail design is key to sustainable trails. And every trail needs to be properly designed by qualified trail builders with experience. The current connector does not meet those sustainable trail guidelines, and even for an advanced trail, kids are going on to those trails, and this is over their heads, and so that becomes a safety concern. Also, it still needs to be marked as a trail, even if it's temporary. I did, I was in a shop recently, and there was a note that somebody else was lost on the trail recently. And to to make a point about the the need for qualified people, and I use an example, you wouldn't have even a staff member who is qualified in another field build, you know, design your your water treatment facility and and same as if you wouldn't send an apprentice out without oversight from a master technician. Okay, I put in many hours designing these trail systems at the and this here at Emmitsburg, and I followed the MBA guidelines and the US First Service Guidelines, and any new trail should also be designed in the same way. So positives, I do see there were some good, yes.
I'm sorry. The timer's gone. I'll ask you if you could summarize
Sure.
your major point in one sentence.
Okay. I've said what I'm gonna say about that, but because the the documents that I attached didn't make it. Two main points about the orange trail. There is some damage being done by the loggers on the trail. Number two, and one of those is south of the Crystal Fountain, someone has pushed a bunch of debris right in the turn of one of the trails, and we don't know what's going on with that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steele. Appreciate it. At this time, we turn to Mr. Richard Lindsay regarding land acquisition. Mr. Lindsay, is this for?
I spoke with him prior to the meeting.
Okay.
He's good to go.
He is. Mr. Mayor, I didn't hear what you said. He is going to
He's good to go. We we discussed something. He came in and
Oh, he's not gonna provide comments then?
No, no.
Oh, very good. Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, so we move from Mr. Lindsay to Ken Altidina. I'm sorry if I got it wrong. Okay. There it is. All right, well. It's not as bad as you think, true.
No, it's bad. I know. So I thank you for seeing me tonight. It's my first time here. My name is Ken Altidana. I actually live in the Brookfield neighborhood. So first off, Mr. Burns, thank you for your service. I appreciate it. My first time here at a meeting, like I said, and I'm here to second what Scott brought up earlier about the issues we are having on Brookfield Drive and to offer a solution. So currently, right now, on on Timber Mill Road there in our neighborhood, we do have speed bumps on there. We do not have them on Brookfield Drive between Brookfield and the next next community over. Tim, yes, I see, sir. So I would like to ask that we do get those speed bumps on there. I think it would absolutely make a difference. To his point, this last weekend was was really bad with the amount of traffic going through, the speeding going through. There was an accident over off of Carrot Court. A gentleman hit a stop sign over there. So to your question earlier, these are not residents of the neighborhood that are driving through here. It is absolutely traffic coming from somewhere else, whether they're Maryland residents or Pennsylvania residents. Like, you know, I I see a lot of Pennsylvania plates going through there. I do live on Ramblewood Drive. My house does back up to Brookfield Drive, so I'm someone who hears the traffic often. It is speeding, whether it's a motorcycle, where it's vehicles. The big concern I have is the number of residents we have living in the neighborhood with children is expanded. You know, to his point on Iristown Road significantly. Something needs to be done before something really bad happens. I do appreciate Officer Ahold here. I know he is, you know, an advocate for the community. He's he's around. He's able to talk to us, and he builds relations with the people. But I think something further does need to happen with those roads there to slow the traffic down there. I'm great that it's, you know, we do have traffic. To your point earlier, you know, for the firemen and people that are coming to visit the the town and and provide, you know, money for the businesses in the neighborhood and the in the community, it's great. I love it. We just want people to slow down. So that's all. Thank you very much, sir.
Mr. President, if I may.
Yes, sir.
That that was something that I inquired about earlier several months ago about the speed bumps, but at that time, it was not feasible due to the construction of the homes on Iristown. I know that things are wrapping up, so
Yep.
I apologize. I didn't. I didn't revisit that.
Okay.
So thank you for bringing that up tonight. That's something that that we all need to discuss
Yep.
as a deterrent for the traffic that goes through there. I knew once that opened up, that was gonna happen.
It's been a huge issue. Brookfield Drive is now complete. The 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 fixings on that road have been complete, so the sooner we get some speed bumps in there, you know, the the better.
Can't guarantee that, but I mean
Oh, I'm hoping we can.
But I
I really am like, you know, look, I don't want tickets. Obviously, hold, so don't pull me over for speeding, but you know, I want everybody else to stop.
So quick question.
Yes, sir.
I know we've heard from an HOA representative.
Yep.
Is there a consensus from the HOA? Because if if we haven't heard that, I don't know that staff has heard that. But that helps us move the process forward. The other part is common sense also moves it forward. So it's not, that's not the linchpin for a board moving in that direction. The one thing that I'll put in the equation is Brookfield Drive is designed to be a collector road, so the speed bumps, I think, should be amenable to, like, they should accommodate some bumps. But this is something we will also follow up with staff on regarding, and we'll follow up with you, so.
Collector roads. So just to to touch on that, too, because the collector road would was supposed to be the bypass as well. So the problem with the something that's labeled as that is collector roads cannot have speed bumps, so it would have to be reclassified and how it's done.
Okay, so
We will turn to staff for assistance there.
So it's a bigger issue then, right?
Thank you. Appreciate you coming in.
All right, thank you, guys.
Just real quick, one more thing.
Yes, sir.
If you could let the citizens or the the your community know that you've been here and that you might see a bigger police presence there because Deputy Ahold had been questioned by neighbors of why are you in our community so much? Why are you in our neighborhood?
Really?
Yes, he was, he was, he was almost accused of harassing the neighborhood, over policing your neighborhood, so.
Yeah, it could be my neighbor. That's why he's I know who he's talking about, but.
Okay, so I'll I'll officially invite Deputy Ahold to come forward. And Deputy, just formality wise, please identify yourself.
Deputy Frederick County Sheriff's Office, Emmitsburg Community Deputy. So so all these issues have been brought up before, and we actually did. We basically did a traffic study for two months on Iristown Road and inside Brookfield, and I couldn't find violations. So I think what happens is you hear loud exhaust and vehicles give the appearance that they're speeding, but they're not speeding. And and in essence, they're they're maybe doing two to five mile an hour of a speed limit, not doing ten, fifteen, twenty mile an hour like people think they're doing because a vehicle is perceived to be going faster than what it's really traveling. So I can get all those statistics. I saved them in my computer and and be happy to come over and speak with the HOA, but I can assure you that there is no lack of police presence in the community. In fact, like the commissioner said, I actually got a complaint at the sheriff's office for being in the community too much. So and and that and that was a documented complaint that my supervisor had to deal with. So again, we were out here. I I have been off for a month and a half, and the and the other deputy was off, so but we we are, we're stopping cars. I mean, we I stopped one hundred and fifty cars a month myself. And we were addressing all these issues. Again, I I will be happy to come out with your HOA and show you guys the statistics that we had from our traffic study. And it was very hard to get people running the stop sign. If you're if you're if you're saying that running a stop sign is like a California roll or not coming complete stop, absolutely. You know, but again, we have to get in, this is a small town and have reasonable enforcement, you know. Every little violation, we can't just, you know, get the homeowner who's running late to pick their kids up to go to a softball or football game, a bunch of tickets because they they didn't come to a complete stop, stop sign. I think that you have to have a reasonable enforcement, but as far as speeding and addressing the issues in town, we have and we are continuing to do that. We have a good police presence here. Is it perfect? No, but we are certainly addressing it and certainly here in town. I was in town to four o'clock Saturday morning. A lot of people don't know what I was driving because it wasn't a marked police car. But I was in town to four AM. I was in Brookfield and and Pembroke and the Paul Street and all the problem areas that we've had issues, and I can assure you that the town was quiet because no one went to jail. So please know that we are out here. You're not always gonna see us, and we're not always gonna look like a black and white police car. But there, we are here. There's a lot going on in town, and we are here. And if you have a problem in a town, you can message me on Facebook. You can I've made myself pretty known who I am, and you can send an email, and I literally check my email. Any of these commissioners can vouch for it. I respond back in a matter of minutes. So I'm actually married to work sometimes. But just understand that we are here. You're not gonna see us every day, that we're in different vehicles. We sign other cars out. And we are doing speed enforcement and traffic enforcement all over the town. And I promise you that we have a pretty relatively really good we have a pretty relatively really good, safe community. So.
Right. That's it. Thanks, sir. I'm gonna ask you to hold off, because I have to follow the format framework. The deputy's name was mentioned. He wanted to come up and not necessarily rebut, but add comment. Typically, when the name is invoked, that occurs in our process. So. But I will be happy to talk with you at a better time after the meeting, and I will certainly follow up on what your specific concerns are. I'm happy to advocate for you with the deputy and even have him as part of the conversation. So you know. Okay. We turn now to Michael Turnquist. I hope I'm saying that properly.
Yes, sir.
Hi. I'll invite you to come forward, just if you just advocate for your position and just identify yourself. Hi, neighbor.
Hey, Mr. Michael Turnquist. I live at the scene of the accident on Saturday night at 4,000 Carrot Court. I understand what people are talking about with the with the speed situations. We've been through another type of board meeting, but it seems it's gotten worse on on Brookfield since Irish Town became a through street from from track road. And it's, I hate to say, it's not just cars. It's school buses and and commercial vehicles that are, I think, probably working in the in the Brookfield construction types of vehicles. But if the commissioners are considering speed bumps, I think that would be that would be a real help, because they, I understand the speeding, but it's 15 mile an hour.
Correct.
Oh, on Brookfield. You can walk 15 mile an hour, and some of these people, I guarantee you, are running those walkers.
Yeah.
That's all. If I was, we seen what was going on. I'm here to back up the people that were that were concerned with with kids and grandkids and children and everything else within the community.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Donald May interject?
Yes, ma'am.
Something that we can look into on the town side would be those speed signs, that trailer speed signs that you can put up in one of the key locations that people will see their speed. And I think that'll be a better way for everybody to be able to gauge what the actual speed is. I'll work with the county on that and see how quickly we can get one up here.
That would be helpful.
Could you also check and see what one of those portable ones costs that you can take from different locations? Because it seems like every month we have a different spot in town that the people are complaining. It's something we can move around. That would be, that would be great.
I looked into it a couple of years ago. I can't tell you what the price is off the top of my head, but I'll certainly look into it, and then maybe Maddie can see if there's any grants available.
There you go.
So yes, we will look into that.
Yeah, we'll get.
Very good. Okay, so with what Mr. Turnquist said regarding the group he is with, I have Valerie Turnquist signed up and Mr. Philip Smith signed up to speak about speeding on Irish Town and Brookfield Drive, or rather, traffic issues for Brookfield Drive and Irish Town Road. Would either of you also like to come forward? Or do you feel you're satisfied? You're gonna pass? Okay. Mr. Smith, would you like to come forward? Yes, sir. Absolutely. Please come up. And I'm not trying to cut you off. I'm just trying to make sure that everybody has their opportunity. So if you'd just identify yourself and then move forward.
Good evening, Philip Smith, Brookfield Community. I live on Irish Town Road. And we do have a fair amount that appears to be going pretty quickly. I'm right there at the crest of the hill. Often, I kind of worry about backing my truck up into the street. People come up pretty quick. And between me and the next two houses, there are nine children between the ages of three and 13. So we see quite a bit of the neighborhood community, children coming over to and through, to and from bicycles in the road. And really, that fear is there that traffic is coming at what looks to be accelerated speeds, and we would really appreciate some sort of signage or speed bumps, anything that could help slow people down in that area. Personally, I've got four children at the house, and we're right there at that, where that crest is, and that's what our concerns are. And that's all I had.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming in. If you guys can compare notes, I only have three. We have four kids and four kids, you know.
Thank you.
Okay. We now turn to Mr. Mark Long. Mr. Long, a candidate. Welcome, sir.
Yes, good evening. And like you said, I am Mark Long, and I'm running for Emmitsburg Commissioner in the upcoming election on September 27. And I just wanted to introduce myself to folks this evening, just like Amy did. I live on the west end of town on Fraley Road, across from the Fraley Farm. And my wife Jill, with my wife Jill, who recently retired as a family advocate with Head Start and with our dog Watson. Emmitsburg has a lot going for it. It's a wonderful place to live. It's got a rich, fascinating history, a focus on sustainability, great parks and trails, an inviting small-town character and a sense of community. But like any small town, Emmitsburg has its challenges as well, and I want to help meet those challenges so that Emmitsburg continues to be a great place to live and thrive. I've been serving the community in various ways for many years, both in Emmitsburg and in the wider county and regional community. I've been serving on the Emmitsburg Planning Commission for the past four years, and I'm currently chair. I've been serving on the Emmitsburg Sustainable Communities Board for three years and served on the Stormwater Advisory Committee. I've also served on the Emmitsburg Green Team. I've been serving the wider community in several significant ways. I just finished a seven-year term on the Frederick County Affordable Housing Council and served the last two years as chair. The Affordable Housing Council advocates for affordable housing and advises the county executive and county council on housing policy. I also just finished up seven years on the Board of Directors of Interfaith Housing Alliance, the last two as chair. Interfaith Housing Alliance is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that helps to develop affordable housing for folks of modest to low incomes and provide supportive services for their clients to help them achieve financial stability. For the past six years, I've also served on the Board of Directors of another nonprofit in Vision Frederick County. It's dedicated to enhancing the social, economic, and environmental vitality of our community. I have in-depth and broad experience working on issues our community faces and helping to find solutions in a thoughtful and collaborative manner. I've had experience helping craft legislation for the county, mostly to promote affordable housing. Last week, for example, I helped present legislation to the county council with Councilwoman Jessica Fitzwater and others to revise the county's moderately priced dwelling unit ordinance. This ordinance requires developers to build a percentage of new homes as affordable to those of moderate incomes or else pay a fee to the county's housing initiative fund, which then goes to creating affordable housing. A work group composed of stakeholders from the public, private, and nonprofit sectors worked on this revision for one and a half years, and some of us for nearly two years. The revisions will help create more affordable housing for our county. I share this only because this is very complex legislation, and the work was somewhat wonky and tedious. And to highlight that I'm capable of working on complex issues and doing the hard work to find solutions for the long-term benefit of our community. If elected, I will focus on supporting our businesses, maintaining and updating our infrastructure while being fiscally responsible, ensuring we continue to be a sustainable community, and ensuring that any new residential development is done in a responsible and thoughtful, smart way. As I said earlier, Emmitsburg is a great place to live, work, and raise a family. And I will do what I can to make sure it stays that way for future generations. And I'd appreciate your vote on September 27. And thank you, Commissioner Burns, for your service the past three years.
Thank you, sir, for coming in. Okay, I have additional folks signed up for public comment. I have former Commissioner Wallbrenner. I have Ms. Bowden. I have a Mr. Ms. Raymond and a Mr. Daub. But I have you signed up for the Ukraine Sister City piece, so no public comment from you at this time. Is that correct? Ms. Wallbrenner?
I would just like to say that.
Let me invite you up to the podium. So yeah, but for the record, thank you.
Hi, Diane Wallbrenner, 535 West Main Street. I'm just not sure that everyone here with us will be willing and able to stay through the Treasurers Report and the Planning Commission Report. Because sometimes those details get a little long. I appreciate, but I'm not sure that everyone else will. So if we could maybe make our public comment now, and then anyone who can stay for the.
Very good. Okay. So for the Ukraine issue? Okay. Let me turn to the board. As we don't usually get that type of request. Commissioners, are we okay? Consensus on this? Okay.
That's fine.
Please move forward. We appreciate.
I would just like to say that I have a group of people here who have been working in support of Ukraine and are absolutely delighted that the town is moving forward with the proclamation to declare LUTS Ukraine a sister city. And I'd invite any of you here with me to come up, stand with me, and maybe make any public comment that you'd like to. We've been doing things like fundraising efforts. I know that Kathy Bodine has Bodan has been working on settling Ukrainian refugees. I know that Natalie Raymond lived in Ukraine and has been there recently. I know that Conrad has been working on a film about a Ukrainian orphan. And I just want to say that we're really, really thankful and proud that our small city can reach out to a small city in Ukraine and give them that kind of support. So we had a great dinner, by the way, at my house before this. But but anyway, it's just such a good community feeling. And we're really proud of you guys for doing this. I don't know if everybody can stay through the whole declaration, but can I invite anyone else to speak who'd like to at this time? They're signed up.
That's right. If they're signed up, yes, and that would be.
Kathy.
Mr. Raymond.
Natalie. Do you want to say something in Ukrainian? Come on. Get up here. I don't know how to speak Ukrainian.
My name is Natalie Raymond. Ukrainian name was given me by Father Natasha Stepanyenko, Natalia Stepanyenko. I speak three languages, Russian, Ukrainian, and English. I'm sorry, I was not prepared for some speech, but I'm speaking from my heart. I started my immigration in 1991 because the Soviet Union collapsed, and I decided enough is enough, because I don't want the Soviet Union come back. And when tanks came to Moscow, I said, they will come to Ukraine and they will swallow Ukraine. So 91, my heart said, this is something will bad in the future. And 32 years later, it's happened. On March 5, I had speech in Gettysburg in Lincoln Square in Raleigh. And Diane came and gave me a huge, long, warm hug to support me, and she said, maybe you can come today also. So I just would like to say I'm extremely, extremely, extremely delightful and impressed about support with all of the problems, which one coming up with the citizen of the Emmitsburg. That some citizen of the Emmitsburg and residents Emmitsburg thinking about worldwide problems in Ukraine. And I just remember in Soviet Union, when I danced in ballet company as a child, we had the sister Kioter and Toyota and Tokyo Japanese ballet companies, and it was great for Ukraine. Get sister in Japan. Or we had also music school when I went to music school and conservatory city in Bratislava, and I traveled to Bratislava. This is a great experience of the United Nations. This is a great experience of the human beings and humanitarian help. So from the whole Ukrainian people, I would like to now very, very much thanks for everybody for the strong decision to do this humanitarian action, because I don't care about colors. I don't care about language. I don't care about politician. I care about action. This is my first word, which I always say in front of everybody's. I just buried my mom because of the Putin. I just buried my mom, and I lost my mom, which worked for the president of the Ukraine with all government awards. I went in Warsaw, and I just get back from the atrocity, and I went through a lot of, lot of grief, and I still grieving. And I want that Ukraine win because of, I lost my mom. Even more, I want that Ukraine win, because I lost the one of the honored women, which in the whole world, she was the whole world for me. And that's, that's my priority right now, kind of to help is as I can, just to people who needs to help, especially like orphans or old people. And I tried to evacuate my mom, and I couldn't save her. And I just brought something to you entertain a little bit, because we cannot not entertain. We are old country, very old country. And I said to myself, something will probably very interesting. I wish that Ukraine win. And the ladies in Ukrainian who is wearing right now a helmet, use this as much as they can, because that's how we look like all Ukrainian ladies. And I would like to sing you a Ukrainian song.
Thank you very much for coming in, Ms. Wallbrenner. Thank you for bringing our guest in, Ms. Raymond. Okay, so at this time, we now move forward. We've moved through our public comment. And now we turn, I want to make sure in the right spot. We have administrative business, and we have none scheduled for tonight. Is that correct still? Okay, very good. Thank you. So we now turn to our consent agenda. One item relates to resignation. The other relates to an appointment. Return to staff.
Correct. So before you on the consent agenda, it's for consideration to accept the resignation of Terry Ray as an alternate to the Planning Commission.
Okay.
Do the first one.
All right. So as this is a consent agenda, we don't discuss. We just moved to the vote. Is there a motion to accept the resignation of Terry Ray as an alternate to the planning board? So move. Is there a second for this motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Motion has been made by Commissioner Davis. It's been seconded by Commissioner Burns. With that, we call to vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We now turn to our second item, an appointment.
Right. So the second item for consideration will be to appoint Brian McKinney as an alternate to the Board of Appeals for the term of September 12, 2022 through September 12 of 2025.
Is there a motion to accept the motion as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second for the, excuse me, the appointment? Is there a second for the appointment?
I'll second.
Thank you. The appointment's been, sorry, the motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz for the appointment. It's been seconded by Commissioner Sweeney. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both motions carry five to zero. We now move forward to our Treasurers Report. Mr. Burns.
Good evening. This is the Treasurers Report for September 12, 2022. We have, this is the cash activity as of August 30. We had a cash balance on August 1 of 7,272,466. We had deposits in the amount of 2,366,470, withdrawals in the amount of 465,998, with left us with an operating balance moving forward of 9,172,938. The top 10 checks are listed below, and any questions you have, either I'll answer it or Steph will.
Any questions for staff related to these items?
I'll note that we did receive, as you can see, the jump in the cash balance. We received a second tranche of the ARPA money just a week or two ago. It's approximately $1.5 million. Probably over the next two months, I'll ask for board designation of that money for water and sewer infrastructure projects.
Okay, we need a motion for this to accept the Treasurers Report. No, right. Okay, thank you. All right, we now turn to the Planning Commission Report. Mr. Golden or Mr. Ritz?
Planning Commission did not meet in August. As indicated earlier, our next meeting is scheduled for September 26 at 7:00 PM. I'll give an update to that meeting at our October town meeting on the 3rd.
Terrific. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we now turn to agenda item number one, proclamation celebration. Celebrating the 100-year founding anniversary of the Emmitsburg High School for consideration.
Okay, I don't know. The mayor's gonna read it, I believe, or somebody. Just one correction in the first paragraph. Okay, I don't know. The mayor's going to read it, I believe, or somebody. Just one correction in the first paragraph. The ceremony begins at eleven A M, not ten A M. It is corrected on the official proclamation.
That's, that is important because of the ribbon cutting out in front. Excuse me, the other proclamation up here. Let's see, proclamation celebrating the centennial of Emmitsburg High School building. Whereas the Friends of Emmitsburg Library hosting a centennial celebration of the construction of the old Emmitsburg High School building on September, excuse me, Saturday, September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two at eleven A M at the Emmitsburg Public Library. And whereas Emmitsburg High School was once a local school that served first grade through eleventh grade from eighteen ninety-eight through nineteen sixty-eight and twelfth grade students from nineteen fifty through nineteen sixty-eight. And whereas the building located at three hundred South Seaton Avenue, Emmitsburg, Maryland was constructed in nineteen twenty-two, served as the high school location for forty-six years. And whereas the three-story building housed elementary classes on the first floor, high school classes on the second floor and in the basement. And whereas the construction of the new wing on the left side of the building took place in nineteen fifty and nineteen fifty-two and housed the school cafeteria, gymnasium and locker room. And whereas the Emmitsburg High Schools, the students were known as the Emmitsburg liners because of the town's close proximity to the Mason Dixon Line. And the alumni liners still meet annually for annual alumni banquets. And whereas in nineteen sixty-eight marked the last graduating class of Emmitsburg High School before the school combined with Thurmont High School Mountaineers at the new Catoctin High School. And whereas today, the building is known as the Emmitsburg Community Center and houses the town hall, Emmitsburg Public Library, Emmitsburg Senior Center and more. Now, therefore, by proclamation that the mayor and council of the town of Emmitsburg, Maryland do proclaim Saturday, September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two as centennial celebration, as the centennial celebration of the old Emmitsburg High School building and do hereby honor the Emmitsburg High School alumni on the hundredth anniversary of the building construction. Twelfth day of September, two thousand twenty-two, Dallin Briggs Mayor and co-signed by Timothy J. Donald President of the Board.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to accept the proclamation as modified? So moved. Thank you. Is there a second for the motion?
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Davis, seconded by Commissioner Burns. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Motion carries five to zero.
Uh, just one note, it is open to the public, so they encourage anybody to attend. They're going to have light refreshments in the library itself. There will be some alumni in attendance as well.
All right, thank you, man. We now turn to agenda item number two. Proclamation declaring Lutsk, Lutsk, Ukraine, a sister city to the town of Emmitsburg for consideration.
Okay, thank you very much. I, I want to thank my resident friend here, Conrad Weaver. He, he helped me pull this together and get to meaningful Zoom meetings with the mayor. And we also invited the president of the Mount St. Mary's for the second one and president there university. This is kind of dear to me. It strikes me because I asked myself the question, would I stand up and fight for our country? Or let it roll. And, and we have here Dr. O'Toole and Dr. Boday. Who were working on this and he had Diane Wallbrecker and those people here. But Conrad was a player. And I think we're planning to trip hopefully this spring to make the presentation of the, of this thing. We were, we're going to try to do it this September when it was, there, there is a State Department advisory. Okay, the proclamation declaring Lutsk, Ukraine as a sister city of the town of Emmitsburg. Whereas Ukraine proclaimed independence from the Union of Soviet Socialist Republic on August twenty-fourth, nineteen ninety-one, adopted its constitution nineteen ninety-six and has been fully independent country. And whereas on February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two, Russia military forces conducted an unprotoned invasion of Ukraine resulting in the destruction of cities and towns. And whereas Lutsk is a city in northwestern Ukraine with a population of more than two hundred thirteen thousand people. And whereas friendship among people of different countries and cultures is a great force in creating peace, tranquility, harmony and understanding. And whereas America and Emmitsburg in particular support the political, economic and cultural independence of all of Ukraine. Whereas Lutsk is of a significant culture and historic importance to Ukraine, to Europe and to the world. And whereas local Emmitsburg organization sets as the seat and center, Nepal International is already working in Ukraine, providing life-saving food, shelter and medication as well as transporting supplies. And whereas Mount St. Mary's University has expressed an interest in partnering with Lutsk Institution of Higher Education, such as L C A, Ukraine, Vol, Volin National University, Lusk International Technology University and Lusk University Institute of Human Development. And whereas the sister city relationship between Lusk and the town of Emmitsburg will establish a more culturally integrated society fostering the opportunity for both communities to share ideas. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed, the mayor and council of the town of Emmitsburg, Maryland do proclaim its desired intention to join with the city of Lutsk, Ukraine and formalizing a sister city relationship. And invite all residents to join us in expressing support to Lutsk as well, the people of Ukraine as they bravely defend their country and freedom and lives. Adopt the twelfth day of September, two thousand twenty-two, Dallin Briggs Mayor, I've signed with Timothy J. O. Donald, President of the Board of Commissioners. Thank you very much. Commissioner Ritz had a comment. He was, he was thinking about the, he wanted to add something.
Sure, I was going to do that when we did discussion, but I was, just for full disclosure, I was discussing with the mayor today. Maybe this is something, I don't know if it'll need board approval in, in the future. But as I understand, you may be going over there in the spring or maybe Mr. Weaver might be going. I thought it'd be pretty neat that once we pass this to obtain a flag of, of Lutsk, assuming that they have their own city flag and perhaps exchange our town flag with them. You know, as a symbol of, you know, sharing each other's flag and maybe even have it here at the town office.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Great. Okay, that's a great idea. Okay, is there a motion? Sorry.
That was it.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the proclamation as presented?
So move.
The motion's been made by Commissioner Sweeney. Is there a second for the motion? Seconded.
Commissioner Burns.
Very quickly by, oh, by Commissioner Burns. Is there any further discussion? I just want to thank everybody who's been involved in this. I think this is profoundly important, especially for the preservation of democracy. And therefore I call the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody against? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Now turn to agenda item number three, approval of ordinance twenty-two dash zero-nine, update to town code eight point one, two point zero, four, zero. Removal of grass and weeds for consideration. If approved, this would allow the town to abate violations of this chapter at the expense of the property owner. Such expense would be chargeable as a lien against the property and collectible in accordance with town code title one. We now turn to staff.
Okay, thank you. I can give you a little bit of background. Commissioner Davis and I attended a seminar at the M M L Summer Conference that talked about kind of code enforcement and how other municipalities address code enforcement issues, in particular this meeting. A lot of municipalities were talking about their problems with mowing or, or lack thereof mowing. There's several municipal attorneys present. The, the overall consensus of the room was how they abate properties that do not want to mow. And in particular, they, these municipalities, these attorneys recommended towns to, after you issue so many door hangers or letters or citations, you, then the town itself can then mow the property and then seek reimbursement for the fines. Leaning the property is a long way out. That's not the first immediate solution. So give you a little bit of background of what we do right now. Over the last year, so we issued one hundred and twenty-seven door hangers for mowing complaints. That is anything that's over eight inches. So we, Amy would go put a door hanger on the doors and it basically gives them about five to seven days to cut the grass. We usually give them seven days. The code says five. Of those one hundred and twenty-seven door hangers, we only had three that would not comply with mowing the grass, two of which were abandoned properties. And the other one had numerous code violations on top of just mowing complaints. So we would put a door hanger on it on the eighth day. Basically, door hanger says per code eight point one, two, oh, four, oh, please mow your grass. On the eighth day, if it's the weekend, weekday or the day after, if it's a weekend, we would go out to check to see if it's mowed. Ninety-nine percent of the time, it's mowed. It gets logged in Excel sheet and then we're done with it. If it's a, if, if it's not mowed or if it's a rental, then we send them a certified letter giving them fifteen days to mow, realizing that they need to sign for the letter. So here you are, eight days, seven days, eight days, plus another fifteen days, your twenty-two days. Grass is already eight inches. How much has it grown in those, those twenty-three days? We do keep a list of landlords. So if it's a landlord property or rental property, we do send them the letter. If we don't get a response off the door hanger or a second letter or, or a letter, if it's a case of the rental, we'll send the certified letter. A certified letter gives them an additional twenty days. As you can imagine, the grass is really high at that point. At this time, then we have to send out a thirty-day certified letter stating what action will be taken if the grass is not mowed. Currently, we have no recourse in our code other than to write a seventy-five dollar citation that can be written every day. Once you issue that citation, correct me, Zach, if I'm wrong, they have fifteen days to request a court date. And then they have twenty, another five to pay their fine. So then they have twenty days to pay their fine. And then once you request a court date, you can no longer find the property. And then you have to wait for a court date from Frederick County, which is extremely backed up. So now you're talking months of the town being unable to enforce our mowing code. Anybody that's lived next to somebody that's got twelve, eighteen, twenty-four inches of grass, it's a, it's a health and safety hazard. And so we were looking for some sort of remedy on how to move forward to expedite it again, out of one hundred and twenty-seven door hangers, three, three problem issues. So I came back and I reached out to the town managers or Zach reached out to some town managers. And we were able to receive or to get a copy of the town of Middletown's code that addresses their mowing. So we had the town attorney take a look at it. She made a few tweaks to it. So on page thirty-three of your packet, thirty-three of your packet, well, you'll see where we struck out everything that was already in section eight point one, two point oh, four, oh. So on page thirty-three, this is some of the recommendations that we listed, the definition of weeds and grass. We kept the height of eight inches or the intrusion of weeds and grass into a public right of way or in adjoining property. The dish, the definitions for bushes, shrubs, trees, hedges, et cetera. Notice to abate. The code, like it does, it currently said, within five days of the date of this notice or within some other reasonable time, the condition may be abated by the town at the expense of the property owner. So we would, what we would do now is we'd continue with our, putting our door hanger on. After five to seven days, you need to have your property abated. The municipal infraction was recommended to be raised from seventy-five dollars to a hundred dollars. But after those five days, the door hanger goes up. If the door, if, if the lawn is not mowed, the town may take the option of mowing the grass and then billing the homeowner, the property owner, the landlord, whomever is responsible for that property. We do the door hangers. It's not in the code that says do a door hanger. We've gotten a lot of success with these door hangers. So it's an effort to, to kind of abate the properties. And nine times out of ten, they're, they're abandoned properties that, you know, they don't, people don't care about anymore. So there's no incentive to mow it. Are they going to pay? Are people going to pay the fine? Or are they going to get the property leaned? You know, that's, who knows what they're going to do. But this is just an effort for us to be able to clean up the town and protect the health and safety of the neighbors of these properties that the grass gets out of control.
Any questions for staff?
Yeah, I have one. For those that don't have access to it, in, in section C on page thirty-three, the notice to abate section, it refers to the lien against the property and collectible in accordance with town code title one. What is town code title one for those that don't know?
Yeah, that's, um, I have to recall it off the top of my head. Oh, there's mine.
We got the book here.
That one probably has not been updated yet.
That the one we were able, we allowed the town to be able to place liens on.
In accordance with.
In accordance with the.
Yeah. There you go. That's title one. If you recall, it was the last month or the month before that gave the town the authority to, to issue these citations and as well as to lean properties when citations aren't paid. Because of right now, we don't have many options to collect any fines. And I can, I'll pull it up if you can.
Mr. Ritz, say what you'd like.
Yeah, I'm, I'm doing that for anybody that's here or, or listening, that don't, that don't have access to that right now.
Oh, I've got one question. When this is done, you'll, you're up. I just want to hold off while staff is looking. Are you sure? Okay, I saw you're okay with Mr. Davis' ask. Mr. Davis, the floor is yours.
What would start the process? Would it be a complaint or, or would be us monitoring the neighborhoods? Or what would?
It probably would be a combination of both. A lot of our mowing complaints are generated by citizens. It's usually a neighbor or somebody in the neighborhood, but some of them are of just observance.
How's everybody doing?
So the, the only comment I would say is, I think the advantage of this is that it supersedes possibly what HOAs are able to do because HOAs obviously have their own rules as far as what the lawn lengths and things of the nature are. And that one is very difficult to enforce from an HOA perspective because you have to go through your lawyers and all that kind of stuff. Whereas when the town comes in, hey, we can put this door hanger on. It's brought to the attention right away and it hopefully is then taken care of versus going through the lengthy process of what the HOA might have to as well. Understood.
And can I say something, Mr. President? Something we learned for the East Main Street property, which I'm sure everybody's aware of, is the lengthy process that we have to go through in order for us to, to obtain an order of abatement. That's exactly what this is, but we have to go through the courts right now in order to do that. It took us nine, ten months in order to get an order of abatement for that property. So it's just, this is going to save so much time, money, effort, Amy going down the court. It's so much time.
Yeah, I mean, normally, under normal circumstances, I think I'm the guy that always complains about excessive regulation here, here in town. However, I do know we have some properties that are problems and we can't really do anything about them. I could think of some that actually don't have an HOA as well. I'm also the guy that recommended maybe curbing the, the mowing thing due to the price of gas. And I was reminded that that could cause rodent infestation and that's true. There, there's a property in Emmett Gardens right now that's, that's pretty bad due, due to not being mowed. And no one's living there, you know, a bank owns it and critters are running around. The neighbors don't like it.
The banks are one of the hardest ones to get done. And that, and that's the goal of this is to, is not to lean properties. It's not to, to levy fines. It's to get the properties. is not to lean properties, it's not to, to levy fines, it's to get the properties cleaned up for the protection of the residents, so that you're not seeing a snake or a whatever creature might be living there coming out. But that's the goal of it, you know, and we have to wait nine months to abate a property. I can't even imagine what, what could be living in there or growing in there. So I found it, it was in July that we passed the collection of municipal charges. And it basically says, any valid charges, taxes, or assessments issued by or on behalf of the town, in addition to real estate taxes, shall be charged as leans upon the real property of the debtor within the municipality. And it goes into what valid charges are, any amounts due to the town for the cost of abating, any violation of the town code, or levied by the courts. And that was approved on July eleventh. I believe Commissioner Sweeney was absent.
So current, our current process, it seems to, if, if it comes, comes to it, it could be months can go by before something happens. If we pass this tonight, what timeframe are we looking at? If, if no one's no one's addressing the issue, and the grass continues to grow from, from, from the time they're first sighted to the time that the lean would be placed on that property, what are we looking at?
So what I would like to see is, we'll continue with the door hangers. And the door hangers gives them about five to seven days to, to mow the grass. We will follow up with a letter with probably an additional seven days that says, if you do not cut your grass by this date, then town staff or a contractor, which we need to decide if it's gonna be town staff, or we're gonna, to outsource it. Then this contractor will then go in and mow your grass. We will send you a bill. You'll have X number of days to pay this bill, and then if you don't pay the bill, then it goes to the courts to establish a lien. So probably two months.
I'm, I'm gonna vote in favor of this, but I just ask you that we you promised me you'll use good judgment and good common sense that, you know, grass hasn't grown here until this recent rain. But there were people with eight inches of the little honeysuckles sticking up that by this ordinance would get them. And just, just promise me that we use good, good judgment and.
Right. So the mayor, the mayor and I would have to ultimately approve any, any going forward with a lien. And, and, and I think it's a testament to one hundred and twenty seven door hangers, and we only had three issues. I think it's a testament to how above and beyond we try to go to help people, and the notices that we give people and and the door hangers have done very well. To staff's own horn, we did door hangers for water shut off, and we only had one. So we are trying to go above and beyond to get the word out.
Good. Yeah, because I did do a walk through of West Main Street the other day, and almost every, I could have found a violation almost on every property of a weed sticking up here, or something sticking up there, including my own, which I haven't pulled yet, so please be careful.
No, we, we, we do our best to, to respond mostly to complaints. You know, the properties that we're talking about, and they were extremely overgrown and hazardous. So, yes.
Mr. Burns.
To, just to Commissioner Davis's point, I mean, obviously, I think a lot of people that aren't irrigating their, their grasses this past probably month were in the situation where you had a couple weeds that are coming up and things of that nature. I know I'm guilty of that. But like, I, I think the thing that we may miss, and we talk about the timeline and stuff like that, is when we do have those droughts, or we have this long extended period of time, some of those mowings can last months on end. Like, you, you think about this, I think the last time I cut my lawn was July. And when I cut it on Saturday, there wasn't much to cut because of the weather and stuff like that. So we might be in a situation where we're not constantly going back out and out and out again. It's gonna be like one time in July, and hey, that might cover us if we have a professional go in and mow it until, you know, the fall season and stuff like that. So just, just a thought.
How often do you foresee this being contracted out rather than utilizing town staff?
So I would, I, I need to sit down and talk to, to Jimmy Click. I know staff did, did the one, did mow the one property on West Main Street. East Main, yeah, East Main Street, sorry. And I mean, if you're talking two or three properties a year, it's something that staff can handle. Willing, you know, depending on their schedules, more than likely, we'll try to do it in-house in a bill at the town staff's hourly rate. Obviously, if you contract it out, it's probably gonna be more expensive.
True.
So, I mean, we'll do our best. I do want to talk to him about what he feels is best for him and his staff.
Okay. So question, couple of questions for you. I'll just say, backing up the common sense advocacy we're trying to enforce. We certainly want to avoid receivership. I mean, I don't think as a town, we want to own properties just through leans. But it's definitely, you know, a carrot stick situation. How much is, how much of this modification in the policy is driven by the courts being slow? I mean, if the courts were to clear up and be more quick in their response times, would that push us back to the old policy, or do you think we're gonna stay with this?
It, it might slightly, but the way that our code, the way that our code is currently written, you're still talking, you know, twenty plus days before you can even send in for a court date, and then you're gonna sit and wait for court. I don't, I don't, it might speed it up some, and you may not be grossly at six to eight months, but it's not gonna be as quick.
So this, this due process is definitely gonna expedite things. I mean, just.
Absolutely, yes, absolutely.
All right, last piece, and this is sort of way down the line in detail. But when a second and a third hanger get hung, is that right, up to three, or how many?
Just the one door hanger, and then follow up with a letter.
Okay, so one door hanger and the whole process, in the new modified piece. Okay, very good. And is the one door hanger different than the water bill reminder door hanger?
They're all, they're all, are they all the same color? No.
Okay, that's good. Okay, I'm hoping that they are, because we have clarity and are
Yeah, no.
Diverse learners will call them. So, okay, very good. This was me.
I know the state has some property, the state mowed North Seaton, I don't know, correct?
Yes, they do. Oh, you're talking about the, the bank?
In the gutter. I didn't know. Do you have to call them to do that? Or is that what?
Okay, so Zach's saying the gutter is made by a private person, and then State Highway puts the North Seaton on their schedule. However, if we do email them, then they'll expedite their schedule.
I was just wondering when, how, because some, some of the gutters and stuff, if you go up North Seaton, they're two foot tall.
I say we go after them, get some of the unfunded mandates back.
That they have to move out.
Right, right.
We'll cut them a deal. Commissioner Davis, they lower the MS four, we'll, we'll mow it for them.
Moving forward. I'd like to call this to vote. Any other comments before we move forward to vote? Any other questions for staff? Hearing none. All in favor of the modified ordinance as presented? Please say aye.
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 No, hold on. So moved.
In a second. I'm getting ahead of myself. I'm sorry. We'll get you through. Thank you, team. One, two, three. All right. Is there a motion to accept the ordinance as presented?
So moved.
Very good. Is there a second for the ordinance?
Second.
As presented. Thank you. My apologies. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anybody against? The motion carries five to zero after presented properly.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, staff. All right, we turn to agenda item number four. And this relates to Silo Hill Basin retrofit, retrofit project change order request in the amount of forty two thousand five hundred fifty five dollars for consideration. Return to staff.
Okay, thank you very much. So this is our first change order request, and I'm not gonna beat around the bush here. As you know, I, I don't. The Frederick County Soil Conservation District, they really put us through the wringer on this project. There was four or five separate reviews each time, each review, they found new things, which, you know, they didn't find in the previous. So the vast majority of the forty two thousand five hundred fifty five dollars is the result of little, little overreach at the conservation district, in my opinion. So on page thirty seven of forty nine, I'll just go over the brief, the change order request. So they're requiring that we do a one foot by one foot concrete collar and AL CMP riser. This is costing us thirty four hundred and twenty dollars. After we did the geotechnical reports, they found a bunch of things they didn't like. This is, so we had to do a redesign for that. Public meetings prep and attend. This has nothing to do with the Soil Conservation District, also with the grant applications. They helped along with that, which were both successful. But the next two items, four A and four B, these were two additional rounds of review per Frederick County comments. And also tree maintenance, professional support. So they helped us figure out a plan. The Conservation District wanted us to completely remove all the trees on the rear bank of the basin, which cost us thirty seven hundred dollars worth of design, and then also additional seven thousand dollars of tree removals, which isn't included in this, but we, we took it out of the stormwater fund. So it's a tough bullet to swallow, but we did receive thirty four thousand dollars in grants for design, hundred and twenty one thousand dollars for construction, and we're still potentially eligible for some more money with DCNR. So it's a little bit easier to swallow this bullet. So we're asking for approval of this, so we can continue pushing forward with the, the basin retrofit.
Any questions for staff related to this item?
When do you see this being completed?
Yep, we're starting at the last week of September, or the first week of October, and it should go only about a month. So.
Anything else, Mr. Sweeney? No? Okay, Mr. Ritz?
So this is it for their request? If we're doing this the end of the month, they're not gonna come back with more?
No, the, we got a permit through the county.
Yeah.
Stormwater management and erosion sediment control. Stormwater was great. They, they had no problems. However, when you get into construction, you don't know what you're gonna get into. So it's a possibility we will come back. Not saying yes or no.
How much, and how much we, how much was grant money for this?
Hundred and twenty one thousand plus thirty four thousand.
Okay, so we're still okay. We're not.
We're still really.
We don't have to budget anything to meet this requirement.
No, 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 we have funds in the.
I also think it's just ironic that they're asking us to remove trees.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, the whole MS four thing is to plant trees, to combat pervious.
To be fair, it's because the outfall goes out the back, so the tree roots can go into the outfall device and destroy it and make it inoperable, but I understand the point.
Do we get dinged for that for MS?
No, no.
Just checking.
Any other questions for staff?
So if we don't approve this tonight, what happens? Just saying.
The project fails. We can't go forward.
And then what?
We won't meet our MS four requirements per the federal government, and we potentially get fined.
Potentially.
And you guys can go to jail.
How many points do we get for this?
I'm sorry.
I don't care about the jail part, because I don't think so, but the, if anyone's listening.
Seven point nine six credits.
Seventy nine. Way to go.
Some, okay.
Okay.
It's approximately almost half of what we're required.
I know this helps with our credits. This is, this is a pretty decent chunk.
So we go back to the MS four thing. I'm gonna run for a moment. Thank you. The the piece I'm wondering is could we have possibly partnered with the county in any way possible to have them review in advance what we're putting together? And you're shaking your head no.
I'll, I'll make a quick comment.
Yeah, sure, sure.
Um, so unfortunately or fortunately, Frederick County's reviews of stormwater management, erosion, and sediment control. They've become a lot more strict. They've actually held up our pump station project for over a year for stormwater management, and, and they were, I brought a change order to you a while back for that. So I think unfortunately, this is the way that it's gonna be moving forward, at least with Frederick County, with the, with the staffing they have in place, that they are really reviewing each project with a fine tooth comb. And, you know, unfortunately, towns, municipalities, at least in Frederick County, are gonna have to pay the price for it.
So is the standard for this therefore DNR standard, or whose standard are we trying to satisfy with this catch basin?
It's the state of Maryland standard, which is off of the federal government standard.
Okay, all right. So are you saying therefore the county's standard is more stringent than the federal standard?
I, I can't say that. I think they're just, you know, interpreting the code to the code.
Right, to the letter of the law, essentially.
All right, and the federal therefore is providing more latitude in this?
They have a set of guidelines that they release, just like I have a set of guidelines. I have to follow for the permit. They just have to go down, check all those boxes.
So the parameters have some gray.
I'm not sure.
Not necessarily. And I think maybe I'm, I misspoke. It's just the, the, the guidelines are very strict, and Frederick County is following the very strict guidelines like they should. And I think, as we all know, things change and things that, you know, we have to adapt to it. Our contractors have to adapt to it. They're just things that, that they're finding that they want us to do, and, and within, and they're certainly within their right.
So what I'm driving at is, there's a regulating entity that we have to satisfy with this, with the standards of this being reconstructed. And I'm wondering, is there any, is there any partnership we can put together in order to benefit from their expertise? So in the future, we don't find ourselves dinged by a change order.
They already do have that system set in place. They require a concept plan.
Okay.
But when we submitted our concept plan, there were hardly any comments.
Interesting.
Then, when you went to the actual real submitter, the first submitter, they came up with tons and tons of new comments, and then we, we addressed all those comments, no problem.
Right.
Then there was a second round of brand new comments. Then there was a third round, brand new comments. And then there was a fourth round, brand new comments. And at that point, we said, look, our grant, our grant is due next week, which at the time it was, we have to get moving on. They wanted us to replace the entire back sloped of the basin. It's just, and we said, we just can't do that with our grant.
With the price point that we have at our disposal. Okay, with our funding. All right. All right, well, that's frustrating. I mean, I know it is for you guys, but what I'm really trying to get at ultimately is to relieve the burden from in-house staff to we have some partner who could help us in the process, because what I do also know is, and I don't mean to compare apples to oranges, but in other counties, some municipalities are able to work with their county government
Yeah.
in the partnership. And the municipality doesn't lose its autonomy, but they gain a valuable asset and resources for modifying products like this to hit regulation. Okay.
Yeah, so Carol, Carol County has the partnership with the municipalities. Frederick County does not. And that might be something the municipalities want to look, look forward to in the future of trying to develop a better partnership with the county, but we just don't have that at this time.
One thing that.
Also know that, right, and PG County has both.
One thing that Carroll County does, however, require is that the Carroll County owns every single basin in their jurisdiction, all throughout the county. So the HOAs wouldn't own anything, the business owners wouldn't know anything. However, the municipalities then have to mow and upkeep all those basins. That's the partnership.
Sure.
So is there cost savings there? Probably not.
I'll throw, I'll throw Frederick County under the bus on this one, because, yes, they don't work with the municipalities, but they also control several of the larger communities where they do it all themselves.
Okay.
Pretty good. So while they don't work with us, they're handling some of the larger.
Like Urbana and outside of Frederick.
There you go.
Okay.
So I'll throw them under the bus for that one.
Interesting. Okay. Second to last meeting. Well done. All right. Is there a motion to accept the change order? Wait, do we need, how are you defining exchange order or?
Change order request number one.
Okay, is there a motion to accept change order request number one? So moved. Thank you. Is there a second for Commissioner Davis's motion?
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Davis. It's been seconded by Commissioner Sweeney. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Anybody against?
Yeah, I'm voting nay as a matter of principle, because I, I know it's gonna happen, and it's just gonna happen all the time. Everything's gonna change. You know, all, what we're doing tonight and ten years from now, all the hard work that's going into this, it's, it's gonna be an obsolete basin, and we're gonna have to start all over again. It just frustrates me to no end. So because of that, I'm voting no.
Understood. Thank you, sir. Motion carries four to one. Commissioner Ritz against. All right, we turn now to agenda item number five, review, consider and approve ordinance twenty two dash zero five, potentially authorizing the implementation of a stormwater management utility fee based on the recommendations and study results of the environmental finance center of the University of Maryland. The purpose of this ordinance is to authorize the change, change or charge.
Charge.
The charge, my apologies, the charge of an annual fee, $20 ERU based on the amount of impervious surface on publicly and privately owned property in town.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, as the chairman stated, this is the result of a study that the town conducted a few months ago with the University of Maryland. We had several community members on that board. I think there was eight or nine different community members, two from the board of commissioners, two citizen representatives, two, two or three businesses and two from the council of churches. So as a result of that meeting, when we gave the presentation, the board voted with a five to zero to recommend a 20 per ERU fee, stormwater fee. So tonight we're bringing that forward to you guys. So I'll go over each of the sections briefly. Please interrupt me if you have any kind of questions. So chapter 13.10, the new chapter is going to call it, be called stormwater management utility fee. Chapter 13, 10, 10, general provisions. A, uh, this is enacted pursuant to the annotated code of Maryland environmental article, which authorizes municipalities to adopt a system with charges to fund the implementation of a stormwater management programs. B, purpose, the purpose is to protect the public health, safety and welfare. The town storm water management, storm drain and water quality programs must be financially supported. All real property in the town benefits from these town programs and services. Those with higher amounts of impervious surface area contribute greater amounts of stormwater or pollutants to the town's stormwater management facilities, storm drains and streams, and therefore should take, carry a proportionate burden of the cost. C, that is our definition, definition section, which I'll skip. Chapter 13, 10, 20, the stormwater management fund. A establishment, the town stormwater management fund is a dedicated enterprise fund. It will be used only to fund stormwater management, storm drains and water resources programs and services. So see this as a sewer fund, a water fund, and now we're going to have a stormwater management fund if passed. Revenue, all the revenue will be deposited into the stormwater management fund. All fees, permitting fees, fines, waiver fees, all revenues collected from the imposition of the utility fee, all interest, grants and special appropriations will go to this fund. Right now it's in fund two that we use. So let's see, expenses, the town may use the stormwater management fund only for the following expenses. Regulatory review, studies and planning, the study design, purchase, construction, expansion, retrofit, repair, maintenance, landscaping, operation or inspection of stormwater management facilities, storm drains and other watershed improvements. A land acquisition for stormwater management facilities or storm drainage, water quality programs related to state or federal laws, including requirements for the town's national pollution discharge elimination system permits. Water quality monitoring, inspection and enforcement activities, including illicit discharge and illicit connection investigations, water quality and pollution prevention, education and outreach activities, program administration and implementation, and other stormwater management drainage and water quality programs that are reasonably required to protect public safety or meet applicable regulatory requirements. Chapter 13, 10, 030 applicability. This chapter applies to all improved real property in the town, including pro, real property that is tax exempt from property tax pursuant to titled seven of the tax property article of the annotated code of Maryland. Chapter 13, 10, 40, utility fees. Establishment, the town shall charge an annual stormwater management utility fee on all real property based on the amount impervious surface area on each property at the cost of implementing the town's stormwater management, storm drainage and water quality programs. Fee, um, the stormwater management utility fee for all real property will be calculated in accordance with the subsection. And as you all can remember, this was exactly what was recommended by the University of Maryland. So one ERU, which is equivalent residential unit is defined as 2,932 square feet of impervious surface on a recorded lot. This is approximately 20% of the residential properties in Emmitsburg. Two, if the impervious area on the lot is more than 100 square foot, but less or equal to 1,466 square foot, the lot is assigned a value of point five ERU. Three, no fee is assessed if pervious is less than or equal to 100 square feet, which we do have some properties like that around here. For the impervious area on the lot is greater than 1,466 square foot and less than or equal to 4,398 square foot. The lot is assigned a value of one ERU. This is approximately 69% of the residential properties in Emmitsburg. A fee of $20 is assessed per ERU. As you remember, the study found we needed a fee of $47 per ERU to fully fund the program. However, the board decided to set this at $20. Six, if the impervious area on a lot is greater than 4,398 square foot, the stormwater management utility fee is calculated as follows. The impervious surface area of the lot in square foot divided by 2,932 square foot times $20. And the, the calculated is about 11% who will have a fee higher than $20 every year. C exclusions, the town does not access, assess a stormwater management utility fee on town properties. D, roads and other road right of ways, the town will not charge a stormwater utility fee for public roads or other property located within a public right of way. The town will charge a stormwater utility fee, fee to owners of private rights, rights away, meaning those rights away that have not been dedicated to public use. Chapter 13, 10, 50, impervious surface area measurements. Again, a reminder, a part of the study with the University of Maryland, Maryland, they calculated this for us for every single property in Emmitsburg. So it says in our, in our, in our ordinance of the town planner shall calculate the impervious surface. However, this was done by professionals who do this every single day, University of Maryland. And every five years we are required to do a new baseline impervious assessment per our MS four permit. So again, engineers will be doing that update as well. I'm not going to be there with a tape measure, you know, measuring impervious. So um, they will do this by using one of the following methods. One, GIS analysis of aerial photography, which we used our last, our last baseline impervious assessment. Two, measurement from a approved as-built engineering drawings or three, at the option of the property owner, at the property owner's sole expense, a field survey signed and sealed by Maryland professional land surveyor. And that would come into play for appeals, which we'll talk about here shortly. Chapter 13, 10, 60 credits. A, generally, uh, the stormwater management utility fee for lots may be reduced through the use of credits when an investment of an on-site stormwater management system results in a reduced impact on the public stormwater management system. Residential lots are not eligible for credits. B, amount of credit, an eligible structure management, structural management facility that meets or exceeds the 2,000 design standards, including subsequent amendments thereto and have been permitted to the town in Frederick County may be eligible to receive a credit of 20% of their fee. C, applications, a property owner seeking credits against a stormwater management utility fee shall submit an application, including an administrative fee as to be established by the town in accordance with the fee schedule that may be adopted by the town from time to time. So I just want to make it clear that these are going to be new systems only. We're not going to be charging an application fee or making them do applications for all existing systems because we already have that information in our system. So I automatically added a 20% reduction in fees for those properties. So it's all new businesses moving forward. Means of collection, the stormwater management utility fee for owners of real property connected to the town's water sewer service will be billed and collected quarterly as part of the water and sewer bill for that property. The fee will be included as a separate line item on the water sewer bill for real property subject to the fee. The stormwater management utility fee for the owner that is not connected to the town's water sewer service will be billed and collected on an annual basis. We have a very small handful of those. So again, it's going to be, you're going to see it on your, um, your water and sewer bill. Delinquency, um, this is, I won't go over this in detail. This is exactly how our water and sewer bills are collected if they are delinquent. It's letter for letter from our water and sewer, which is supposedly letter, letter from the state of Maryland. Adjustments, so submission of requests, this is important. So within 30 days after the date of the initial bill assessing the stormwater management utility fee to the real property owner, the owner may request an adjustment of the stormwater management utility fee. A request for the adjustment must be submitted to the town planner in writing stating the grounds for the following request. So we're going to, Kathy and I are going to create appeal application, which is going to be really simple. We're using Gettysburg boroughs and Frederick cities for, as example. So we may adjust, adjust the fee internally if one, the impervious surface area was measured incorrectly. Two, there is a mathematical error in calculating the stormwater management utility fee. Three, a credit was not properly applied or four, the property owner invoice for the fee was identified in error. Appeals, the written decision of the town planner on a request for adjustment of the stormwater management utility fee is a final decision from which an aggrieved party may appeal. One, the appeal stating the basis therefore shall be submitted in writing within 30 days after the date of the town planner's written decision. Two, the appeal shall be submitted to the board of appeals, which is granted authority to consider appeals from decisions of the town planner pursuant to state law. Three, the board of appeals shall hear the appeal within 60 days at a public hearing during which the petitioner may submit additional evidence. A written decision shall be issued by the board appeals no later than 30 days thereafter. And four, a decision of the board of appeals may be appealed by a party to the circuit court for Frederick County within 30 days from the written decision of the board of appeals. So um, that is the ordinance and I'm here if you have any questions.
I have a few. Um, we'll go backwards. The appeals. Would that be using the current appeals process? Would that require an additional fee structure due to the, this is something different. It's not like a planning, planning appeal.
Uh, I don't know. We'll have to look back into that and we might have to bring another policy to you. I'd have to talk with Kathy and the mayor and see if they want to set up a specific fee, you know, smaller fee for the first time. I, you know, we'll have to work on that, but it does go to the board of appeals.
Okay.
But I don't think it fits the, you know, variance fee or an appeal from a zoning administrator. That's how it's technically written. So we're probably going to have to come back with something else.
Nothing jumped out at me. That's why I wanted to get your take on it. I was, I was just curious.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, you know, personally, I don't think it'd be fair to charge a large fee for the first amount.
No.
Because this is something new for everybody.
I agree.
So, but we'll bring something back.
Okay. Thank you. Um, where was I at? Oh, okay. So we are early September right now. So the water bills, I believe would go out the beginning of October.
Right. The next round of water bills will go out on September 30th and then the following will be December 30th. So they would not go into effect, um, obviously this, um, at the end of the month.
So it'd be the bill doing.
The, the bill would actually be due in.
The February.
February.
So there would be, if passed tonight, there'd be enough notice.
Right. So you would have all of, we'll have a newsletter that goes out with the water bill, goes act, in the physical water bill, September 30th. Uh, we have an email newsletter that'll go out the beginning of October, November, December, um, go up on the website, Facebook.
Yeah. And we have, I have every, every single property, um, I have their fee calculated. So if anyone wants to reach out to me, please give me a call, email me, um, be more than willing to share everything and how we got our.
Be interesting because I was curious to see how many more. He said was about, I forget the percentage you, you said there, there'd be a certain percentage over the 20, the one, the one.
Eleven percent. And then that's one thing I do ask the board. If, if you get angry calls, just please tell them to call me and I'll try to explain everything I can. Or if you guys want to, you know, try to take some of those calls, you know, it's just something that helps us out.
But yeah.
Some people are going to be angry.
Yeah, I know. I, I, even, even with the newsletters, even putting it in the bill, I'm, I'm sure there might be some individuals that totally miss all that. They'll see that line item and like, what is this?
Yeah.
I, I can, I, I foresee that.
It's going to be a rough couple of months, but it's something.
I'd be curious to see that list of, just out of, out of my curiosity to see where, where in town that would be more than the one ERU.
Is there a means to put that as a spreadsheet online? So someone.
I don't know. I don't know if that's, I'd have to open records information. I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't know if anybody would want their address up there with the fee.
Yeah. Okay. Understood.
So yeah, I mean, I would just encourage anybody to, if they're curious to just email Zach, myself. And then we'll respond. But again, out of the entire water billing, it's only, you know, 11% is going to be different. So.
Maybe there's a means we could do it that it comes up with when, if and when a person pays their water bill online, they can see that.
It's on, it's going to be on their water bill.
Yeah. Okay. But I mean, I guess I'm trying to, in advance, I guess in advance. I know it's 11%, but I'm just.
Let them email. Okay. So I, I don't feel comfortable putting everybody's information.
Not everyone's out there.
No, I, I totally agree.
Like individual household access is their specific information. That's what I'm talking about.
Or even if it was something on our website, I don't even know how much that would be to program it, but given the information that you have, it's all stored in a database somewhere. There was somebody that type, they type in their address.
I'm not sure. I'm not good with, I'm not good like that.
But then somebody might say, well, just type in everybody's.
Exactly. Right. Yeah. Right.
Okay. I'm thinking out loud here.
Right. I just encourage everybody to email, call. Anybody you guys talk to, tell them to email or call. Um, I have the spreadsheet as well, so they can email. Me also.
And just to be, you know, crystal clear, if you think your bill is wrong, you know, give us a call. And if our data is different than your data, you know, just like the ordinance states, it's going to have to have some kind of a mathematical. You can't just go out and measure with a tape measure and there for your appeal. It needs to have some kind of a basis, just like the ordinance states.
Mr. Sweeney, yes, sir. I just want to make sure everybody understands that February, by February of 20 three, that there'll be a storm drain bill, be going out just like water bills and sewer bills. Every, every resident is going to be paying a storm drain fee because we have to keep up the MS four stuff. Right. It's just not our town. It's, it's going to be every town probably.
It will be.
We'll utilize our alert system. Put it in the water bills. I know a lot of people take whatever's out of the water bill, read the bill and throw the rest of it in the trash. The newsletter has a lot of, a lot of good information in it and staff puts a lot of work into it. We also have our alert system. We have the sign out front.
Just to clarify, this is in a separate bill, so to speak. It's, it's a separate new line item on the bill.
Correct.
Mr. Burns.
Mr. Golden, can you just do us a favor and define impervious surface for everyone? Because I think that's going to be the question people have when it comes up.
Yes, and we included it because it's so important. People always argue it. So impervious surface, it's a defining ordinance means a number, the number of square feet of her horizontal surface covered by buildings and other impervious surfaces. Gravel, that includes gravel, asphalt, concrete, um, pavers.
Patios, driveways, parking lots.
Yep. Is that all in there too?
Sidewalks, roofs. It's all kind of laid out in there.
Oh, I, I, let's skip packs, the actual definition. There's another one. Service, that was impervious surface area. This is impervious surface means the surface that does not allow stormwater to infiltrate into the ground. For example, surface streets, roofs, sidewalks, patios, driveways, parking lots and other oiled gravel graded, compacted or other similar surface that impedes the natural infiltration of surfaced water.
Any further questions or observations related to this item? You don't have anybody signed up for comment on this. So we move forward. Is there a motion to accept the ordinance as presented? Okay. Motion's been made by Commissioner Sweeney. Is there a second for his motion? Okay, motions been made by Commissioner Sweeney, is there a second for his motion?
A second.
Motion's been seconded by Commissioner Burns. Is there any further discussion?
I'm gonna vote in favor, but I'm not happy about it, you, you all know that. This will probably, this could be the last time you ever hear me have to say this, might not be here anymore. But, uh, just so you all know, it is an unfunded state and federal mandate that we don't have a choice, uh, we, we've got to meet it. And, uh, if I do happen to get back on the board, we're gonna, I'm, I'm gonna hope that we can take some other avenues to try to uh, alleviate some of this pressure that's put on staff and, uh, and for both time and, and money. And look at maybe the Carroll County, uh,
Model.
Model there, and, uh, thank you.
Sure.
You can read my mind, but, uh, that's all.
Okay, thank you, sir, any other comment? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Anyone against?
I'm voting nay, I know what Mr. Commissioner Davis was stating, it's just a matter of principle again. And I know we all voted for that twenty dollar fee. I know it's gonna happen though, as this goes in the future, that rate's gonna continuously climb. Mark my words, it won't stay at twenty dollars.
Probably correct, the motion carries four to, uh, four to one, pardon me, with Commissioner Ritz, uh, voting against. We now turn to agenda item number six. Uh, approval of resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero four R. Authorizing Mayor Briggs and the town manager to file an application for federal assistance with the US Department of Agricultural Rural Development for consideration. The town intends to file for grant funding for the streetlight replacement project. Additionally, there will be an opportunity for public comment related to this item, uh, and that will be, this is, uh, an extraordinary piece, typically we don't do it this way, but, uh, as it is a USDA item, we have a requirement for public comment as the item comes forward, so with that in mind, I turn to staff.
I'm going to ask Ms. Shaw to present this item, this is her grant.
Good evening. So this would be, this resolution is in support of the streetlight replacement project in downtown. And this would be a hundred and six streetlights along East and West Main Street and South Eden Avenue. Um, so we have been piecemealing this project because it is so expensive. It is two hundred and thirty-four thousand eighty-nine dollars for the whole thing, and so far we have come up with um, a thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars in state funding. We have, um, which includes a, um, Maryland Energy Administration grant of twenty-seven thousand five hundred. Um, a ten thousand dollar DHCD grant that we get for being an affiliate community, a main street affiliate. Um, and then also, we have the Community Legacy Grant pending, that was the one Ms. Willis mentioned. If you guys could call and express support for that. Um, so this would be, um, as the resolution shows, we would be getting fifty-five percent of the project, up to fifty-five percent. Which would be a hundred and twenty-eight thousand seven hundred from the USDA. We initially submitted seventy-five thousand, they approved it, and then they came back and said they had extra money, which we obviously wanted to take. So then we submitted for an additional five, fifty-three thousand seven hundred. On here, um, the third paragraph from the bottom, up from the bottom, it says the town's match would be a hundred and five thousand three hundred eighty-nine. That is worst case scenario, if the other grants fall through. Right now, we're projecting the town would actually be spending sixty-seven thousand eight hundred eighty-nine dollars on this project, which is twenty-nine percent of the project cost, so we'd be funding, um, a little over seventy percent of the project through grant funding. Are there any questions?
Mr. Ritz.
I don't believe this, this is probably, um, directed to Ms. Willetts instead, so, um, we potentially would be looking at a budget, um, line item transfer.
Yeah, right, so what I will do, um, is I have to look at the budget and see in fund two. Um, there are monies left over from various projects that weren't fully, um, the money wasn't fully used to see what I have to transfer to that line item. If, if it's still short, then I will ask for a budget transfer, uh, probably January or February after the audit. Like, um, like I usually do, I bring some items that we need to fund in the future.
Okay, and then, just for clarification, wh- where, where is this in town again? It's only one, it's Main Street, right? It, it's not all streetlights at this time.
Correct, it's Main Street, um, out near, uh,
uh, it's East and West Main Street, um, all the way out, it's gonna be basically all the light poles on East and West Main Street. The last pole on West Main is why am I drawing a blank? Yes, okay, I'm drawing a blank, tired, and then out East Main Street to the street, last streetlight pole, which is just up from Creamery Road. And then we have ten, I think it's ten light poles on South Seaton.
Okay, so that's right, so there is someone South Seaton, and we talked about this in the past, and it, it figured it out that, no, that, that is not the case, however, um, potentially we could be pursuing additional grant funding for our developments.
Correct, so we, this is just because as you can see the cost, this is a project that will be a several years phased in project. Um, so after East and West and South Seaton are, are done, then we will, um, move forward with, uh, the developments in other areas in town, it will probably be at a three to five year project.
And even that's not a guarantee we'd be getting that grant money though.
Correct.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Sweeney.
Um, the streetlights, are, are we, we're gonna be getting in a, a picture of what they're gonna look like, the new ones are, are we gonna go with the same thing we have now?
Are you talking to me?
We are proposing to keep the same ones, just make them newer, they would be dimmable LED.
They'll be able to change the lighting and stuff on them.
Yes.
So we've had, um, a few requests from a few folks to extend the lights across the new bridge over Flat Run towards Jubilee, so to speak, uh, toward the east side of, uh, town. Will that be included, anything in there, or are we just going with what we have at the moment?
We are going with what we have for the moment, um, PE was able to, to, um, put a couple arms up that extend over the bridge. But to extend it further up to Jubilee, uh, there needs to be conduit run, sidewalks torn up. So at this point, we're just gonna replace what we have now.
Okay, and we won't be tearing up the formerly new sidewalk to install this, this is gonna use the same ductwork, is that correct?
Yeah, it'll say, yes, yes, it uses the same conduit, um, the same connections. Um, there might be some minor places where they do have to make some repairs, but the idea is to not have to dig the sidewalk up.
That's great, okay, all right, any other questions for staff?
Sorry, sorry, just, just to clarify too, so what we're seeking tonight is a, um, approval to apply for this, um, whether we are approved or denied, there's no obligation on our part, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other items for staff? Hearing none, is there a motion to?
Can you ask for any?
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you so much, I apologize.
That's okay.
It's advised, okay, so, um, trying to find the right phrasing here. In our meeting, we are obligated to give our community the opportunity to become acquainted and, uh, discuss the proposed project. Uh, and we open the floor at this time to individuals, one at a time, uh, to comment on these items uh, related to economic and environmental impact, service area, alternatives to the project, and any other issue identified uh, by rural development, so if there's anybody who wants to express an opinion about the light replacement piece that we're looking at, it is the board that will be potentially authorizing, um, Ms. Willetts or town manager and the mayor to apply for this grant funding. So if anybody has any concerns or would like to share an view on that, this would be their opportunity, Mr. Buckheister, please come down. Again, if you identify yourself and move forward from there.
Sure, it's Ray Buckheister, Welty Avenue, town resident. I'm just curious, um, I, I saw some of this, but I'm just curious if you could recap why they're being replaced. And then, I know you're just looking for grant money at this point, you're not actually moving forward, but I know we need to do that. And I want to know, like, when we go to do this, like, what is for the new product? You know, what's the longevity and why, you know, why are we replacing them? You know, why did that product not have the longevity, you know, maybe that some of the town residents might have think it should have.
Thank you, sir. We'll turn to staff, um, why are we replacing these? And is there, was there an issue with the longevity of the existing lights? And do we have an understanding of what the future longevity might be?
Yes, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned that at the initial presentation. Um, so the existing, uh, streetlights are from circa nineteen eighty and have chipping paint, rusting bases, bolts, and have been a safety hazard. And a lot of them, if you walk up and down Main Street, you can see they're kind of piecemealed, like, you have some newer ones, you have some older ones. So we just want to make sure that we have safe, safely lit streets, and so we want to replace them all together since they are, oh my, what is that, like thirty-four years old?
The, the poles are from nineteen eighty, or the, the light, I, I could have sworn that the lights themselves were about approximately ten years after, that was late eighties that they were put in.
Yeah, um, yeah, so we believe the mayor and I were talking, we think they were all replaced when the street, the main street was initially paved and done back in the eighties. Um, we did put new LED light bulbs in, in like twenty twelve, I believe that was. But other than that, the bases have, are from the eighties.
Okay, yeah, it's, it's more like the late, because I lived on Main Street
Okay.
at that time, and they tore it up. You should have saw what the parking was like along Main Street before that, it was quite interesting. Quite a slant.
So essentially, they're over forty years old, or right around forty years old. And, um, then, you know, technology keeps changing, the, there are a lot more options with these newer lights. As we mentioned, they're dimmable, um, they also prevent, is it night sky, so?
Yeah, those are other features, so the new ones, um, would be the same, like I said, the same style, the same height. Um, they would be lower Kelvin output, they would be dimmable, and they're also will be cut off luminaires, which means they're like kind of dark skied certified is the terminology, so they keep the light from going up into the night sky and doing, um, having light pollution. Um, what else do I have?
Uh, second item, do we have longevity, any, any projection of their life duration?
I want to say I can email the board and double check the proposal I have, I want to see, it was like thirty years guarantee, right?
Right, so, that's the best we can do at the moment, Mr. Buckheister, I'm sorry. All right, um, that's excellent. Any other comments from the board, any other comments from the community? Hearing none, therefore I'll turn to, uh, ask, is there a motion related to this item? Do we need to read this? I didn't think we did, I don't know, I'm happy to if we need to, but okay, no, all right, terrific, all right, is there a motion to accept this resolution as presented? Thank you, is there a second for Commissioner Burns's motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you, motion has been made by Commissioner Burns, it has been seconded by Commissioner Ritz, is there any further discussion? Therefore, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone against? Motion carries five to zero, thank you staff, thank you, Mr. Buckheister for your questions. Okay, we now turn to establishing our agenda for our October third meeting. Staff, we turn to you first.
Okay. I have a couple items, for admin business, uh, have for consideration a proclamation declaring October twenty twenty-two breast cancer awareness month. Uh, turning to the regular agenda, item number one, it will be the swearing in of new elected officials. Number two, for consideration, mayor's recommendation for reorganization of the board of commissioners. Number three, hold a public hearing, then consideration of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash ten, which would allow private and public shooting ranges in the industrial park zoning district. Number four, discussion of possible water and sewer rate connection fee increase options as a result of a recent study. That item is discussion only, number five will be for consideration approval of a planting, planning consultant, consultant contract. That's what I have.
Or, do we have any other items?
The gentleman that was here about the trails, this is two months in a row, do we have to do anything with those, or something we should be looking at?
Well, that's one of the things I'm going to propose, thank you, um, I'm hoping that we can discuss this as an agenda item in November to go with the trail update and discuss specific concerns and move forward at that time, so staff, uh, if the board gives consensus, I think we would push that to November.
To November, it's, sounds reasonable to me.
Um, thank you, sir.
Are you proud of me, I want to talk about trail?
I am, I am pleased, as always, um, moving from there, um, Mr. Ritz.
I, I was wondering, um, for agenda items one and two, they make sense, those two, would it be possible to squeeze in at number three to push those other three down, the potential, um, for what Mr. Buckheister came in this evening? An agenda item specifically for, um, for, for Welty Avenue parking modifications for consideration.
Um, I, I did not get a chance to email the board, I believe the mayor had talked to Mr. Bike, Buckheister, excuse me, I'm sorry, um, about a possible solution, um, to their current problems, uh, with parking. Um, I believe the mayor spoke to you that, um, and I'll just brief the board real quickly, that initially they were supposed to have two marked spaces that the board approved back when the development went in. Um, unfortunately, they only got, there's eleven townhomes, and for some reason, the town only put in twenty parking spaces. One numbered, one vacant, uh, so we're looking into adding two additional parking spaces and numbering each space per household, so one, two spaces one, two spaces two, et cetera, et cetera. Um, as well as, uh, lining across the street for the single family homes that were allotted one spot for off-street parking. Um, and then we will send letters to each homeowner or resident advising them of you get two spots that are numbered. That, that Welty Avenue is enforceable by town staff, parking enforcement. Um, so there's something that we can address going forward with their current issues as parking, um.
The only reason I brought it up, um, I, I believe you stated that you were, you were hoping to, you, you know, other individuals wanted to speak to it, so it, it sounded like it was an agenda item request.
Yeah, Mr. Buckheister, extraordinarily, I will invite you up to the podium, identify yourself one more time. And, uh, the floor is yours for a brief period, you know, our set timer piece.
Yes, no problem, again, Ray Buckheister, I live in Welty Avenue Development. So when we got together with a couple of the residents, and several of them were on the email, um, like I said earlier, I sent it to everyone because I didn't know how it would be addressed. Um, we, a number of us felt like a short-term solution is what you're proposing. We don't know if that'll actually solve the problem, and all I was proposing was an avenue for the residents of that area to talk, because what I offered you was just my opinions, I didn't want to speak on their behalf or anything like that, so it's really up to you to navigate how you want to move forward. I think Mayor Briggs calling me today and the town staff's, you know, current solution will probably solve some of the initial, you know, short-term problems, but, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's however you want to handle it.
Well, I guess my question to you is, it, the short term, are you satisfied with this short-term solution? Assuming that we as a board don't have to vote on that, that, that's something that could be addressed.
Uh, I, I personally
Your, your concerns to be held.
I, I personally think it's a short-term solution in regards to, um, the fact that, okay, so everybody has two spots, right? But let's say my neighbor, let's say I have a, a couple of guests come over, there's nowhere for them to park if everybody's spot is numbered and they're, uh, uh, and we're a pretty good community, so we actually say, hey, you can park at my spot, you can park at my spot, but it's pretty hard right now because we only have one spot. So that community down there never really had, you know, it was kind of regulated by the weltes when, you know, they were there, because most of those properties used to be rentals when the weltes made those two sides of the road there. Um, and now that both of those gentlemen have deceased, there's no, and a lot of the, a lot of the properties have been bought by, by people. There's no real, you know, we do the best we can, but recently, we've had, you know, some residents that have like five cars. And that's And that's problematic, particularly when the cars from the opposite side of the street are parking on our side, because we have no designated parking lot like they do. So it's not really us against them or anything like that. It's number one, I think it can be solved short-term, but I think that I also proposed a number of avenues where potentially we could pick up some additional parking spaces down there. But those things require the town staff or whoever does that to look into what a deed state, wh- you know, what are the property restrictions? What are the properties, you know, um, in the planning and zoning? You know, what, what are the uh, the jurisdictions of those properties? Because like I, I know that there's free space that I was suggesting, but I don't, you know, that's green space. I don't know what that means within the Planning and Zoning Commission.
True.
So there was a number of things just suggested from my point of view. And all I was coming to do was saying, hey, maybe it's, you know, the other residents should have their say. It's just not me giving, you know, a perspective just from one individual.
The short-term solution, is that something we have to vote on?
No.
Okay.
No.
So it would be enacted quickly?
Yeah. Schedules permitted, yes. Um, but yeah, that's something that we can do in-house with town staff. Um, probably get our, just one of our contractors at Stripes for us when they come up and finish Chesapeake. That can probably take care of that, so.
So Mr. Ritz, you might have to jump in for a second.
Go ahead.
So Mr. Buckheiser, a quick question for you. Um, short-term, long-term, would you like to see an agenda item? Do you feel this is a pressing issue that you would want to see an agenda item addressing the short-term piece for October? Or if it's satisfied with the striping, would you want to see a long-term piece to address parking in a broader sense in a November meeting or a later meeting? Like, do you feel there's critical mass that this has to be addressed in a meeting?
I, I think that, that in my personal, a- and I mean, Mr. Huffers here, he can talk, he's one of the, one of the other neighbors down there. I personally think, short-term, that's gonna keep, you know, the neighbors from kind of like getting into these little battles.
Okay.
Do, do I think it need, I think personally that any of the suggestions that I propose long-term is going to take you guys, it's going to take your staff time to vet out anyway. The question really isn't for me, it's a matter of the other, the other individuals on that block have opinions about it, and I don't know whether that's pressing for them or not. You know, I, I think that's something you just have to decide among all the other work that you're doing, how, how urgent or important you think that is.
I think we need to make that an official item then for them to come in at least chat if they'd like to. Maybe they didn't feel compelled to do so tonight due to limited time constraints. And if it comes to be that nobody wants to speak to it, we can always just cancel that.
I guess the other thing too is, depending on how quick staff could get that done, maybe it satisfies enough people in the development that they wouldn't come in and talk about it. I don't know. You know what I mean?
Sure.
No, I do. You know, and, and the only thing I want to follow up on is in, in my um, comments, I brought two other issues up related to parking. I would like somebody to get back to me and tell me how to actively participate so that, because it's an area of interest to me. How, whether I go through P and Z, whether, who do I, who do I get with on the town? What do I need to do to actively work on this as maybe something, you know, that I can contribute?
Well, the, the parking, yeah, we, we, that's, that's an ongoing discussion.
Yeah.
Um, extra parking in town.
Okay, so Mr. Ritz, I'm sorry, Mr. Sweeney, yes, sir.
We do need some members on the Citizen Advisory Committee. That would be one place where that can be brought up. Because they talk about anything in, in the town, not particular parks or whatever, you know. It's represented us from all over the town, and we do have some spots. If you'd like to join the committee, it's October, the, the third Monday in October is the next meeting.
There will also be, depending on the outcome of the election, there'll be one, possibly two spots open on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
True. Mr. Ritz, I'll put this on you, sir. Would you like to see this as an October item or a later item?
I'd like, I'd like that, I like the idea of having other residents from that area have the ability to come in to speak to it. And if they choose not to, then they choose not to. I don't think it really hurts having an agenda item.
Okay, so staff, can we get this for our October meeting? Can we fit that in?
Sure, you tell me what you want to call it, because I don't know.
Wealthy Avenue Parking Discussion?
Yeah, we.
So I'm holding off moving forward with the temporary solution then?
I would continue moving forward on that, but also if there's a larger issue related to street parking and such, Mr. Ritz.
Yeah, yeah, because.
I'm speaking for you, let me be.
No, no, because if we proceed with the short-term, you know, we, we're hearing about this today. We, we don't know what was discussed. We have no, we have no input in that. So um, it's not going to happen overnight. I know that, so.
Can, can I make a suggestion? I, Joe, I appreciate that you're trying to get this um, on the agenda for us. Um, let's, let's speak, just let's shift for a minute. If, if town. Talk to you. If, if the towns, it is town staff that will do it. If, if town staff proposes to do what they're, well, you know, gonna do, that may cause, if that gets done, that may cause a different set of discussions. So it might, if, if we're planning to do that as a short-term solution, you may want to do it and then give people the option to come in, because then the discussion could be, oh, this didn't work or whatever. It's just a thought. Um, if you think it's not going to happen, but I, I mean, we would go back from this meeting and obviously let, you know, our community know what you're proposing, but.
That, that would be great, because like we heard from you, and I know you copied a lot of individuals on that email, but nobody else spoke up. So now we hear about this, you know, parking solution, which sounds fantastic. It might, you know, solve everything in the short term, but.
Yeah, they didn't think that coming tonight would be effective because it wasn't an agenda item. So.
So I'll just throw out, long-term solutions are going to take longer, and I think I put that in my email back to Mr. Buckheiser about um, certain proposals that he made, you know, we have to really look into on who owns the property, um, what kind of right do we have and to move forward with that. I don't know that staff will have anything prepared long-term, because our meeting October first, third, so just uh, two, two and a half weeks away, three weeks away.
So I, I propose this to Mr. Ritz then, and same to Mr. Buckheiser. Go, go with the short-term solution. Allow them to figure that out over the next month or however long it takes, because the short-term solution could be done next week. It could be done in two weeks. If it's done in two weeks, you're only leaving yourself a one-week window for everybody to kind of figure out how it's going to work out.
Yeah.
So allow people, let's say it gets done by September twenty seventh, Election Day, because it's the first day on top of my head. That'll give people a week to kind of, okay, hey, like we kind of stewed over this a little bit. They can come in and suggest or come in and talk about it again in public comments and say, hey, hey, this really worked out. If they go, this is a disaster, then you'll be able to add it to maybe November and or December at that point versus i- i- am I, am I wrong in that assumption? And like, it would give you some time to kind of work with it?
Yeah, I, I mean, we're thinking that, you know, maybe, uh, uh, it's really going to depend, Mr. O'Donnell, on how quick the town staff is able to get that resolution in place. We wouldn't want it to drag on to December and.
No, I, I understand, but at the same time, like, it could be put in tomorrow and everybody's opinion could change.
Yeah, right. No, I, I agree with.
If staff gets done by October first.
Yeah.
You're not going to really have time to kind of stew over like, hey, this really worked or hey, this.
Right.
You wouldn't have the weekends to kind of like, everybody's shifting around.
No, I'm, I'm, we're, we're in agreement with what you're saying. We think that there's going to have to be a fairly timeliness to that.
Right.
Solution, if you want to evaluate that in the November.
So, yeah, so for an agenda item plan on November.
Okay.
Give people time to think about it and figure it out.
It's fine. Is, I just want everybody have the opinion, the ability to be heard, and I want everybody to know what the temporary parking solution is. That, that, that was, that was my intent.
I, I think the residents of that community would be grateful that there was some immediate action taken. And the, and then that time, and then you're considering to allow us to come in and talk about it. I think that's a good solution.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yeah, um, with this, we have this, the parking problem all over town. So we're trying, I mean.
Yes.
We've been trying to figure out parking for a long time, so well, if after, I think, um, maybe November or December, we could put parking on as a discussion on to have people come in from town and.
Yeah, as you, as, as you recall, we did have a five-year parking plan um, that we initially brought a couple of months ago. So we kind of already have one in, in the works. And then we can certainly look at the wealthy avenue area to incorporate in that plan as well.
Well, the parking, yeah. Parking plan had an ordinance too, that had other items in the ordinance that, that I didn't like, so I voted no on that.
Well, actually, the fee, and I'm not to, to correct, but the, the parking plan itself was freestanding. Um, it was just kind of like informational to say, hey, this is the direction we want to go in with the parking plan.
It's part of the fee structure.
Um, no.
It wasn't?
No, it was a separate item. It was not, it was not an approval item. So it was kind of just, for your knowledge, this is the direction we kind of go with the, with the parking plan with like the pool and um, adding spaces on West Main Street as well as some other areas that we were looking for. So we can adjust that plan, look at some of the wealthy avenue concerns and bring back a five-year proposed plan, just for your information.
That, that works. Thank you.
So staff, we are not going to ask for an October agenda item on parking, just so you know.
Um, thank you.
Yes, moving forward, uh, one last item, and I'm bringing this to the commission's attention. A policy question came up related to how does one add an agenda item between meetings? And the practice had been, notice I'm using the word practice versus the ordinance. The practice had been that the mayor would typically request the board president to allow that a new item be added to the agenda. And president in practice had the authority to say, yes, that will fit, or no, it will not fit. And usually it's in consultation with staff as well. And it had been my policy that when it related to a financial thing, like for example, we're running into a quick deadline, we need to add an agenda item for a grant opportunity. Uh, I would almost invariably say, yes, that's for the better, you know, the greater good of the community. We'll add that to the agenda. So in reviewing this practice, we find that we don't have anything written in ordinances. Because the question came forward very recently about uh, an item. Do we have the ability to add an agenda item? And the question came up, well, where does the board president and where does the mayor have that authority? So digging into the ordinances, it's not stated explicitly anywhere.
No.
Now, in a looser, and I mean looser interpretation, the president of the board's responsibility is to um, facilitate or to make easy the business of the board. So that's the only loose interpretation that I saw. However, higher minds will disagree and higher minds might agree. But what I'm getting at is, at the point in the near future, I'm going to ask the board to direct staff to create a policy with um, Powell. So we have it in writing that there's a method to add an agenda item between meetings. I, because right now I feel I can't do that. My hands are tied based on it not being explicitly defined in the ordinance.
Well, you, you know, also, it won't be advertised and people won't know what's on you with that.
Correct, and, and there's a risk with that too. And typically what we do, what we've tried to do is do it in a timely enough way that it could still be uh, advertised. So the agenda did typically show that there was an addition to it. And the other part was, the effort was made by town staff to advise the board that a change had been made to the agenda and it relates to, you know, agenda plus one, which, whatever it was. So I want to bring that back to the board, but I'm thinking November uh, as an agenda.
So if I can just clarify, conversations with Ms. Powell and um, Clark is typically what they have found through MML and other municipalities is, is the Board of Commissioners or whatever the board is called. They, they adopt a set of rules for, rules and procedures for conducting their meetings. So it's not only about adding agenda items, it, it kind of goes over procedures for meetings. And it's, it's probably a couple of pages, and it's adopted by a policy that says, the Board of Commissioners shall follow um, rules and policies set forth and, and, and that book. And that could be something that um, between myself and Ms. Powell can put together in the future, near future.
For any board president in the future, any mayor in the future and have the board function.
Well, can I also just throw it out too, instead of, I mean, that, that's a great, great idea, but um, why don't we just look at the code? Like the Board of Presidents duties. What the Board President shall do, add that, and then potentially add it to the mayor's duties. They cross-reference one another, and then you're done. It's right in the code. Why, why do we need a specific policy?
I think the value there is consistency and transparency.
Well, yeah, but you're.
You're defining it one way, and that, that does work also, and it would be consistent and transparent. But I think what Ms. Willis is saying, please correct me if I'm wrong, is that if we add to some specific procedures of the board, then, you know, instead of taking it piecemeal, we're taking it collectively. We're taking a variety of things to put into code to clarify.
Well, a long time ago, before you were town manager, we had a similar thing. Where we, it was right after I came on board, I believe, like a year or two into it. It was procedures that we needed to do up here. It was, you know, be nice to one another, don't use your cell phones. Um, right. You know, which is a joke in of itself, because now we were going to be using iPads. So if one time it was like, you know, can't use electronic devices, but now you can use electronic, yeah, get that off. Um, so I'm just warning, if we're doing that, I don't, I'm, I don't want to see anything like that.
It's my understanding.
Like you have to say why you're voting no. That's, that's.
The way that MML presented it and the way Ms. Powell presented it, it's just, it's not rules, it's procedures um, on how, you know, the meetings, such as how you add something to the agenda. How, how you do consent agenda, how public con, it's just kind of like, we kind of change sometimes what we do each meeting on how we handle things, and it's more of a consistent step by step that, hey, you have this, and you have the public hearing in front of you. This is how you do a public hearing. Uh, if you want to add an agenda item outside of a meeting, um, this is how you do that.
Okay.
I have not actually seen one before. Um, Leslie's waiting for me to say, hey, let's start working on this. And then she will um, provide me examples from some other municipalities, as well as MML has tons of them.
I'm, I'm okay with that, because one thing I'd like to let you just mention, a consent agenda. I, I feel, I know we don't follow Robert's Rules of Orders here to a T, really at all. But consent agenda, if you look at Robert's Rules, it, it's one lump item that we're given enough notice, which we do, we get our agenda packet, and then we vote on that. It's, it's a motion and vote to approve everything in that clump. That could help streamline meetings. I know we're going on one tonight, and I'm making it worse. Here I am talking. But like, you know, approving so-and-so for planning commission, a resignation of this person, we could all, if it's in there that way.
Right.
Unless Mr. President disagrees with me, um, I think he would save a lot of time. Instead of going through every single different additional motion, motions in that sense.
Yeah, and that's just an example of, of different things that, that are apparently included in all of this.
Mr. Mayor?
I just, just that we want to make sure that uh, everybody in the public transparency gets to know what's on the next meeting and the, where their announcements made. We're Facebooking everything about thirty days before the next meeting. And we try to keep that the best we can for transparency, you know, that a- anybody can, or any can propose, put something on the agenda. I mean, but let's try to do it thirty days before.
Well, yeah.
And that, that's, that's what we like to try to do.
Try. I agree.
Always happen.
It does not always happen, and I, I don't think we do it too often. I'd like to see something. I fully support something. We need to have something in place, because if something does come up. And I do, I do, town staff, they still, yes, they'll, they'll update the website. They do a great job with that. They've been listening. You listen to my, like, even if it's a couple of sentences, you know, what the heck is that ordinance that we're, they're voting on? At least you give a summary. I appreciate that. I know a lot of other people do too.
Okay, so it turned now to staff for our October agenda. No more writings to add, is that correct? Okay, and that also applies to administrative business. No more items to add?
Correct.
And we have no consent agenda items, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so at this time, I now turn to the board. Uh, is there a motion to accept the full agenda as presented by staff for the October third, twenty twenty-two town meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second for Commissioner Ritz's motion?
Seconded.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz, seconded by Commissioner Burns. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five. Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Is there a motion to close the meeting?
I have one question.
I'm sorry, Mr. Sweeney, yes, sir.
Um, Mr. Mayor or or town staff, when we do the, um, if we do more, any more wayside exhibits, um, I don't know if we have any more coming out. Can we get one for maybe for the St. Joseph's for the, for the hundred seventy years they were put up there that they, we used the house in the Civil War, the St. Joseph Parish House to have a
A wayside.
A wayside exhibit, put up there for that.
A wayside exhibit for the Vincentians.
Okay, we'll take a look at it.
Terrific. Okay, so I call the vote again.
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries five to zero.
Aye.
Yes, I was waiting. The meeting closes at ten forty, ten forty-two PM on September twelfth.
As as a tradition.